Good evening and welcome to the July 22, 2025 rescheduled work session and regular meeting of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chad Brown and I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner River I would like to welcome our viewers and thank Spectrum Cable and AT&amp;T for making it possible for our citizens, for our television and live streaming audience. I would like to present your Gaston County Commissioner, beginning on my far right.
Alan Frayley, Chair of Township.
Good afternoon, Jim Bailey, South Point Township.
Bob Hovis, Craters Mountain Township.
Good evening, Tom Kiger, Gaston County.
Somebody's got a mic issue. I'm gonna stop it before we get all that going. Whoever's got the mic open, so, just so we know. At this time, I'd like to ask you to rise and please stand for the invocation given by Commissioner Hovis and the Pledge of Allegiance to be given by Commissioner Sheehan.
If you will, please bow with me. Gracious Father, we come to you tonight to conduct the business of Gaston County. Father, all of us are in need of your support, your understanding, and your touch. The world that we live in today is changing rapidly, sometimes not for the best for all involved. Father, help us to be the guiding light, to do the right thing, and to understand how we try to lead Gaston County into the future. We ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll thank you all for your attendance tonight. July's work session is now called to order. The first item on the agenda is Proclamations, Commendations, Awards, and Certificates. While I'm waiting on Commissioner Cloninger to come around, we'll go ahead and ask that July 2025, the month of July, to be proclaimed as Recreation Month in this county of Gaston. If anybody from Parks and Rec and all will please join Ms. Kathy at the podium, please. Mr. Cloninger.
Thanks for coming, y'all. Good evening. I'd like to proclaim the month of July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month in Gaston County. Whereas Parks and Recreation are an integral part of communities throughout the county, including Gaston County, and whereas Parks and Recreation promote health and wellness, improve quality of life, and support the mental and physical well-being of people, and whereas Parks and Recreation contribute to the economic vitality of communities by creating jobs, attracting visitors, increasing property taxes, values, excuse me, values, sorry, y'all, and stimulating local businesses, and whereas Parks and Recreation services such as youth enrichment programs, senior activities, special events, athletic leagues, trails, open spaces, and nature programs are fundamental to community engagement and lifelong learning, and whereas Parks and Recreation professionals and volunteers work tirelessly to ensure that parks, trails, open spaces, and recreation programs are safe, inclusive, and welcoming for all residents and visitors. And whereas the theme of National Parks and Recreation Month 2025, Build Together, Play Together, highlights how parks are essential spaces for social connection, equity, and community resilience, now therefore it be resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month. And Gaston County encourage all residents to celebrate by visiting local parks, participating in recreation programs, and recognizing the important contributions of Parks and Recreation staff and volunteers to be adopted the 22nd day of July of 2025. And I just want to thank all involved with Parks and Rec for all that they do in our community and provide services to families and to children because I think it truly makes a difference and we always need to support our Parks and Recreation. Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you for this recognition and thank you, Commissioner Cloninger, for your service to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board. I just want to express my appreciation for Gaston County's 10 parks, which span 724 acres, serving as vital spaces for connection, wellness, and community pride. Our parks are more than green spaces. They're where memories are made, wellness is promoted, and community is strengthened. We're fortunate to have parks in the system that not only preserve natural space but also reflect our shared values of accessibility, sustainability, and belonging. A heartfelt thank you to the dedicated staff and volunteers who keep our parks safe, clean, and vibrant. Your work enriches lives every day. Behind every thriving park is a committed team, and in Gaston County, that team is helping to shape a healthier, more connected, and more joyful community. From youth sports and family picnics to quiet walks in nature, our parks are where Gaston County comes to life. Thank you, and again, I thank you for this recognition, declaring July 2025 Parks and Recreation Month.
Michael, I wanted to say congratulations to your whole staff. Some of the things that people don't know about, you guys don't brag about it enough because Brandon, I guess, is too busy playing golf and doing other things, but no, Ellen is doing a great job with the seniors and the senior games, and, you know, people don't recognize that Gaston County is the largest participating out of the senior games. How many weekends a month do we have travel sports, baseball, inside of Gaston County?
We are booked. We are maxed out from March through November.
And then when it gets cold, we go to soccer or we go to something different. So I just wanted to say thank you because people don't just recognize what you guys do as far as the output of what's happening for our community. Obviously, we do travel sports, we do things, but our community is growing. People don't know that the pump track that was put in down at Poston, we've held major events on a U.S. national level, just out of something that was kind of a pipe dream when we started thinking about it. So I wanted to say congratulations to your group and the people who have been associated for so long. You do it with such a small employee part, which is great for us, but also it's hard on them, but we want to say thank you to them. And we want to make sure that those people know they're recognized for their hard work and dedication to just this county, and we're very appreciative of it.
Thank you.
It is with great pleasure for the Gaston County Commissioners to honor citizens who have unselfishly given of their time, talent, skills, and energies in service to, as an appointee, to one of our many boards and commissions. This type of service is the foundation for citizen involvement in our county government and helping shape the future of our community. We greatly acknowledge the work of the following individuals and greatly certificates of appreciation have been forwarded to them. Pamela Bingham, Animal Care and Enforcement, Samantha Dye, Vanessa Palmer, Joseph Shepherd, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. The next item on the agenda is other matters. Any other matters need to come before this board at this time? Seeing none, I will adjourn the work session, and this concludes our work session for tonight. The regular meeting will convene immediately. Thank you for watching. Sir, do you need something?
I didn't hear anything to say.
Is he?
Can I talk now?
No, sir.
Don't call you.
Thank you for watching. If you have any questions, please remit those to Donna S. Buff, 704-866-3196. I will now call the July regular meeting to order. Agenda is the public hearings. The Commission will now take citizens' comments on five public hearings. Comments will be taken following citizens' issues. Conditional District REZ-158, zoning map change REZ-221, text amendment, zoning map change REZ-220, and zoning map change REZ-224. Before we begin, let me outline the rules of procedure. Citizens wishing to make comments will be recognized by the Chair, then requested to step to the microphone and to submit their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments tonight are limited to three minutes. All questions shall be directed toward the Chair for response. The Chair shall rule on all points of order. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor? We are now in public hearing. The Gaston County Commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing, Conditional District REZ-158, Paul Shriver and Thomas Springs, the applicant. Ms. Jamie Comberloo, Director of Planning and Zoning, will give a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Comberloo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. REZ-00158 is a conditional rezoning request from Thomas Springs for eight parcels located in Mount Holly. Four of these lots are currently zoned R1 Single Family Limited, and the other four lots are zoned RS12. All lots are located within the U.S. Overlay District. Together, the lots have a combined acreage of just over 135 acres. The applicant is requesting to conditionally rezone all parcels to the Conditional RS8 District with the U.S. Overlay to develop a planned residential development, also known as a PRD. With all conditional rezoning requests, this proposal is accompanied by a site plan and a set of proposed conditions. If approved, the land will be tied to the approved site plan and associated conditions, regardless if it is sold in the future. You'll notice that the case starts with the number 23. This case was submitted to us for review in August of 2023. Staff has worked with the development team through seven revisions of the site plan and asked that the development team provide as much information as possible about proposed utilities prior to us presenting this request. The site is located just outside of Mount Holly's city limits. A portion of the site was located in Mount Holly's extraterritorial jurisdiction, also known as the ETJ area. ETJ areas are typically extended a few miles outside of municipal boundaries and are subject to city zoning regulations. The city of Mount Holly did have a one-mile ETJ area adopted in 1980. Per resolution signed by Mount Holly in 2018, they relinquished all of their ETJ area to the county with an effective date of June 1, 2018. The subject site is outlined in blue on this slide and is currently vacant. The entrances to the site would be on West Catawba Avenue, and it is situated between Howie and Patrick Roads. There's a small triangle piece that is circled on this slide. This triangle is part of the subject site, however, it is technically still within the city limits of Mount Holly. Per the site plan, there are no structures to be located in this parcel. If approved, the required traffic circle per the TIA would be located in the general vicinity. The site is located adjacent to a property participating in the voluntary ag district. This means that the subject site is located within a half-mile radius of a parcel that is owned by a property owner who has committed to preserving the agriculture way of life. The zoning map shows that the site is currently zoned R1 and RS12. The R1 lots were already county parcels and likely received the R1 as the default zoning district when the current UDO was adopted. The RS12 lots were accepted from the Mount Holly ETJ release in 2018. They were already zoned similarly when they were in Mount Holly's ETJ, so the county matched the previous zoning districts and placed the RS12 district on them. The RS12 zoning district is primarily for the development of homes with a minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet. Higher densities are normally allowed with different types of homes, and this can be accommodated through planned residential developments, infill residential developments, and traditional neighborhood developments. The gray areas are within the municipal lines of Mount Holly. Owners of the properties in blue receive notices of the public information meetings and tonight's public hearing. The public information meetings, also known as PIMS, were held last summer and were well attended. Staff estimates that around 45 members of the community attended the meetings. The applicant hosted two meetings at the church across the street, and aside The applicant hosted two meetings at the church across the street, and aside from one participant who shared opposition towards development of any kind in the area, all of their attendees asked great questions and seemed to be content with the proposal. The questions at the PIMS pertain to traffic, school capacity, and utilities, which will all be addressed throughout this presentation. Staff has received a handful of calls and emails about the request as well. There has also been engagement on our Engage Gaston platform for the project. Main concerns shared are about the proposed utilities, school capacity, and environmental impacts. Three letters have also been sent to the Board of Commissioners. I also have one more that needs to be entered into the record that was given to us this evening.
Motion to accept on that one. Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Mr. Bailey. All in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk?
Thank you. This slide shows the site plan that is being tied to the request. The applicant is proposing to develop 251 lots, 84 of which would be for single-family attached homes, also known as townhomes. The townhome lots are shown in yellow, and then the pink lots show the 52-foot wide lots, and then the blue lots are 62-foot wide lots. The red circles on the site plan indicate proposed areas for utility infrastructure. The site estimates that three community wells will be needed to serve the site, and an onsite wastewater treatment plant is shown on the northwest portion of the site plan. There are floodplain areas on the north side as Taylor's Creek crosses through the site. Taylor's Creek does run into Dutchmans and then empties into the Catawba River. While it is difficult to see on the site plan, the only portion of the development that is in the regulated flood area or within the 50-foot stream buffer is a portion of the access road to the wastewater treatment site. The treatment site, along with the well located to the northern portion of the site and all other infrastructure, are outside of the regulated flood areas and stream buffers. Development in the flood area would require additional review and permits, and this would all be completed during construction review process if the site was approved. The developer has proposed to include traditional amenities that include a walking trail, sports field, pool area, cabana, and playground. This area would likely house the cluster mailbox area, along with additional parking for the development. The site plan also shows a 25-to-50-foot landscape buffer along the fringes of the entire development. And then while a builder is currently not associated with the development, there are architectural standards that are being proposed in the site plan that would have to be included with any design submitted by potential builders. The developer has excluded vinyl and aluminum as a siding type and has required a minimum of six different elevations with mixed materials to be proposed for review during construction review phase. They have also offered an architectural standard for garage designs, which would provide for windows, paneling, carriage-style designs, and other treatments that could complement the home designs. The developer is also offering $1,000 to be given to Gaston County schools for every lot that is being developed, along with monthly reporting of water treatment levels and the data of the collection points in Taylor's Creek. For utilities and streets, the site plan is proposing a public water and wastewater system that would be privately owned and maintained by a private operator. These types of systems are permitted, regulated, and enforced by the state, specifically NCD-EQ and the North Carolina Utilities Commission. Staff has recommended a condition of approval that states all required state permits for any systems related to the collection, distribution, and treatment of water must be obtained prior to approving the construction documents for the site. The water and wastewater infrastructure must also be completely installed, tested, and approved prior to final plat being approved for the development, just to ensure that there is adequate onsite water prior to the start of home construction. The utility contractor and operator is here this evening to answer any questions you all may have for them. For the roads, NCDOT has reviewed and preliminary approved the designs of the internal roads. All proposed roads will be built to NCDOT standards with a goal of petitioning them to the state for acceptance and maintenance once the development has been built out. The next few slides will highlight what is required by the UDO for a planned residential development or a PRD, and what is being proposed by the development team. The UDO does require a minimum of 20% of PRDs to be dedicated to open space. The site plan currently shows over 60% being dedicated, which is roughly 85 acres. The developer has also provided a landscape plan, which includes buffer areas, tree save areas, and a tree planting plan on page five of the site plan. This includes a total of 435 new trees to be planted throughout construction. PRDs have an increased density calculation allowed through the conditional rezoning process. Per the UDO, a typical PRD can have up to eight dwelling units per acre. However, because the site is located in a protected watershed, the density regulation for the watershed area is considered. The Catawba Protected Watershed allows for up to two dwelling units per acre and a max of 24% impervious calculation. The site is proposing 1.85 dwelling units per acre with an impervious calculation of A TIA was completed for the site, and two mitigation efforts were noted. The TIA originally accounted for a higher lot count, and mitigations were based off of a 350-lot proposal as opposed to the 251 lots that are being proposed today. Both elements have been included into the site plan, and if you have any questions regarding the TIA, we do have consultants here as well to answer those for you. Staff from our emergency services department did review and share that they would like to review the road designs and proposed utilities further to determine how they could affect emergency services. If the plan is approved, emergency services would be given the construction documents to perform a more in-depth review of the site. The next few slides do highlight the reliefs. With conditional rezoning cases, we do like to look at them as a negotiation between the county and development team, so these are highlighting those areas of relief. This slide shows the reliefs that are being requested for the proposed lots. They are asking for a reduced lot size from 8,000 square feet to 6,000 square feet, reduced front and side setbacks, but then they are also offering an additional five feet on the rear setback. The next relief is for the road frontage requirements. The UDO requires a 50-foot road frontage requirement for all new lots. This site is proposing 22 feet for the townhome lots, and then a minimum of 35 feet for the single-family detached lots to account for the lots that are accessed off of a cul-de-sac. The PRD use does have a garage setback regulation that states garages shall be setback 12 feet from the front building line. This regulation is typically found in ordinances as it encourages longer driveways and reduces garages from being the main focal point of the architecture. The site plan is requesting to reduce this to allow garages to not extend more than two feet in front of the front door. Staff is supportive of this request as it reduces the impervious calculation for the site overall, which is key when developing in a watershed area. The next relief is for green strips. The UDO requires a minimum of three-foot green strips in the road design. The DOT did approve the road designs, and these designs have green strips that are less than three feet in width. Staff is supportive of this as the county does not regulate roads, and we do not have our own road standards, so we defer to what the state has required or prefers. The final relief is for signage. The UDO limits residential signs, so the applicant is requesting additional square footage for a monument sign that would have a similar design to what is shown on this The site is located in a small area plan, which is the Area 3 Riverfront Gaston-Northwest Gaston Plan. The future land use designation, well, the closest future land use designation because this was a release from Mount Holly's ETJ, is the suburban development use. These areas envision significant single-family residential areas that exist around commercial pockets representing a standard suburban center. These centers can also include multifamily houses and support services as well. Staff does find that the presented application is consistent with the vision of the comprehensive land use plan as it meets the designated future land use and would match the overall feel of the area. The plan was routed to our TRC at the initial submittal and recently with the approved site plan for the purpose of this meeting. The GCL-MPO provided their standard letter and shared that there are no funded projects on the strip. There is a proposed unfunded connection between West Charlotte Avenue and West Catawba Avenue, and this is noted on the CTP and the MTP. There is also a proposed unfunded interchange at the intersection of West Central Avenue and Brickyard Avenue. And then throughout, there are proposed bike, pedestrian, and multi-use facilities along Catawba. Gaston County Schools did provide a letter as well and shared which schools would serve the site. The schools are currently operating below a 75% capacity. Staff did meet with the development team last week to review the conditions of approval, and we did add an additional condition. An updated list has been provided to you at your seats and would need to be entered into the record.
Are there any comments from the applicant at this time?
I just needed to be entered into the record. It was an updated list of conditions.
The updated list? Is that from last Thursday's meeting?
Yes.
Motion made to accept that?
Say.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Cloniger. All in favor? All opposed? Is unanimous, Madam?
No.
I'm sorry?
Two opposed.
All in favor? It's unanimous.
For the record, there were 10 original conditions. The 11th condition that was added stated that water quality levels of Taylor's Creek, water quality data, and wastewater data should be provided to Gaston County on a monthly basis once the wastewater treatment plan is in operation. And then as with all conditional rezoning requests, staff is asking that you receive our staff report and presentation, receive the applicant's presentation, and then make a motion to either approve as presented, approve as modified, or to deny the request. The planning board did recommend approval of this request with a five-to-four vote. The main concerns included traffic, environmental concerns, overall service areas, and then questions as to why the development is not going through Mount Holly for the rezoning request. Mr. Chairman, this does conclude my presentation. We do have the development team here with us this evening. They have a presentation they want to share with you, and then they are available for questions as well.
Thank you, Ms. Kemberloo. Any comments from the applicant at this time?
Just the arrows.
Just the arrows, okay. Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to come and speak before you this evening on this matter. My name is Paul Shriver, and I am representing the landowners. I have 25-plus years' experience in the industry, involved with the design and construction and purchase of over 10,000 home sites, and I have relationships with most national builders. I know that we are not bringing a builder here with us this evening, but this is more about the landowners and the attempts that they've made to rezone this property in other jurisdictions that have been unsuccessful, and we will get into that. But one of the things I really wanted to bring up tonight is, you know, y'all see rezonings of this case mainly from developers, builders, especially a project of this size. And tonight is not about me, it's not about a developer or a specific builder. This is about the landowners basically exhausting all other options that they've had before them at this point. And it's real easy to forget when you're hearing a rezoning case that there are landowners that are directly impacted by the decisions y'all make. And I would like to spend a little time tonight just to have you understand who these people are. Mr. Springs, Ms. Springs are the major landowners on this property. Mr. Springs is in his 80s, and he has no children to leave this property to. He survived cancer twice. He's losing sight in his eye, and basically, this is his last opportunity to see this property developed. Mr. Walls has passed since we started this process over a decade ago. He's survived by children, grandchildren, but he's not here to be able to see what he envisioned for this property. And the last owners are the James family. They have a couple of small young children, and the sale of this property will help them put their children through college debt-free. So those are the impacts that y'all's decisions have on this property. So just wanted to, you know, help you understand, you know, the people that you're going to directly impact with your decisions. I'm going to try to go through some of this quickly, as Jamie spent a lot of time on some of these areas. Our engineer is Arjo Harris, 20-plus years of experience in the industry, site planning and civil engineering services. They've worked in Gaston County previously, and they too have relationships with multiple national builders. You've seen the site plan. Jamie's given you great detail about it, so I'm not going to waste your time on that. What I do want to point out is that, you know, we're asking for minimal requests in our PRD request, mainly just related to the size of the lots. The number of lots, we're only going to have 1.85 units per acre, which is a low-density community. Open space that's required is only 20%, and as Jamie mentioned, we're over 85%. And another key factor that wasn't mentioned in there because it's not part of the request is the amount of tree save. When we go with the smaller lots, more open space, we're saving a lot more trees on the property, really addressing the environmental concerns from the 2035 Gas and Land Use Plan. Jamie's already mentioned the architectural design standards that I know we can get through with any builder. These issues do not cause any problems. Again, we had two days of community meetings. Forty to 45 people were there. Only one person really had an issue with what was going on. I do understand Tom's nephew has been calling several of the commissioners, kind of stirring up some concerns. Tom's belief is that, you know, his nephew thinks that he's going to inherit the property from Tom and doesn't want to see the property rezoned, so he's doing everything he can in his power to stop development of this property. As I've had conversations with staff and some of the council members, Gaston County has a little bit of a pricing dilemma. You know, the comprehensive plan is looking for affordable housing in Gaston County, and the reality of budgets require higher-priced homes to, you know, meet the needs of the community without going into debt. We believe our plan provides a compromise. With multiple product offerings and reduced lot sizes, you know, we have a significant number of homes with the townhomes expected to be priced in the 300s, the smaller single-family detached lots will be in the 400s, and the 62-foot-wide lots will be in the 500s. One thing I'd like to point out to council is, you know, a lot of what gets missed on your side is just how expensive it has gotten to develop and build houses in the Charlotte area. Right now, we're seeing roughly $2,600 per linear foot of street, so that means the 52-foot-wide lot is $135,000 just to put on the ground. When you look at a 2,000-square-foot house, it's $110 per square foot, so roughly $220,000 in materials for a 2,000-square-foot home. You add in the amenities and all the things that we're offering to provide in with this, it adds another $6,000 per house, which means the cost of the house is $361,000. And in order for the builder to sell a home, cover all their costs, and actually make a little bit of money, a 2,000-square-foot house today is pretty much $433,000, give or take. So our plan also, we spent a lot of time with staff looking at the 2035 plan to make sure that our proposal was going to meet those goals and needs. As Jamie said, we had seven revisions to the plan before finally settling where we have. Transportation, you know, we're reserving right away for the future extension of Rankin Road, even though it's not a funded project, we're taking that into consideration. You know, we're having walking trails throughout the community and reserving areas for future expansion of the Carolina Thread Trail if they decide to come through this area. Quality of life, obviously, is a concern for everyone. Added home sites will significantly help the growth of commercial areas, which will be very beneficial to downtown Mount Holly, which is practically within walking distance of the new neighborhood. And I have it on good authority that Publix has been looking for an opportunity in this area, but they need more rooftops and higher incomes, and this project provides both. And finally, natural resources, with the reduced lot size and increased open space and increased tree save, we meet this goal. And also with this site plan, there was another opportunity to come in from an existing neighborhood, but it would have required two creek crossings, so we took that into consideration and eliminated that crossing and connection point. Big point now is, you know, there's a housing shortage in Charlotte, and I know this is Gaston County, but the reality is the Charlotte market is pretty much going from Kings Mountain to Mount Pleasant and from Statesville to Chester, and there's over 18,000 units right now that we're short in this market, 4.5 million nationwide. With over 100 people per day moving to the Charlotte area, that means we need 25 new houses every day or over 8,000 houses a year, in addition to the 18,000 that we're short already. There's forty-plus home builders in the Charlotte market, including sixteen of the top twenty builders nationwide. I've spoken with most of these builders, they're all waiting to see what happens in terms of the rezoning before determining their final interest in this area, but they have all expressed initial interest, depending on what happens tonight. All of these builders are in need of lots, it's just a reality. Lack of utilities is causing even more concerns throughout the Charlotte market. Union County, everybody knows, has been having trouble with utilities for many, many years. Cabarrus County, same way. So with what we're working through and working with the state, we found a way around that issue. As Jamie mentioned, questions about why this hasn't gone through Mount Holly were brought up at the last meeting, so I wanted to make sure that we addressed it today. I personally, in 2015, tried to rezone this property, annex and rezone, in Mount Holly, and we received full denial, actually in front of the council. 2016, Meritage Homes tried to get through the process, they were unsuccessful. 2019, Eastwood Homes. 2021, Smith Douglas. And then in 2022, the family actually hired Grimes Yeoman, a rezoning specialist attorney, to try to get the property through Mount Holly as well. Again, unsuccessful. Every time each of these applicants would be working with planning staff, they would, you know, meet whatever requirements were asked of them, resubmit, and new requirements were added on. Goalposts were constantly moved, could never get anything solid to move forward. Tom believes this denial is personal. Tom sat on the Planning and Zoning Board for the ETJ for many years, and did not go along with many of the things that the town proposed, and he believes that this denial has now taken on a personal level with all of the qualified builders and developers who tried to get this through the process. Jim Hope, former council member, is here, and he can speak to these items. If you have questions for him directly, don't expect you to take my word or Tom's word on it. As far as the traffic plan, Kimberly Horn, major traffic consultant, clients all across the country, they are the traffic engineer for Mount Holly and Belmont. They'll be involved with the design of the off-site improvements. And a lot of this has been said by Jamie, so I'll be quick. You know, the scope was coordinated with county and DOT. They follow national, state, and county standards, and the plan has been approved by both the county and DOT staff. As Jamie mentioned, this TIA is conservative in nature, as the original study had 372 homes on it. Only 251 are being proposed, so that's less than seventy percent of the study lots are actually being built. And with the conclusions Jamie mentioned, the single southbound egress and ingress at Access One with the hundred-foot protected storage at Riddle Road, and this just kind of gives you more of a visual of where exactly we're talking about. The roundabout at West Catawba and Rankin, again, single southbound egress and ingress lane, maximizes the IPS along Access Two, and overall improves the traffic conditions and safety over signals or stops. This would be designed to meet NCDOT standards at the appropriate time. And again, just to give you a visual of where this is located, you know, at Rankin and West Catawba. And finally, as far as the traffic study goes, it showed minimal traffic impact caused by the project throughout the identified study areas. Holly Springs, the Waste Management Team is Waste Management Pros of the Southeast, and unfortunately, Eric's not here tonight. He had traffic problems and is stuck on eighty-five. But fortunately, I've been involved enough of these meetings, I can answer a lot of the questions for you based on the information he's provided. Biggest thing is, Eric and Waste Management Pros is independent of the builder and developer. They don't work for us, you know, if, well, I'm not the developer anyway, but they don't work for the builder or whoever develops the lots. They are a separate company, so if the builder or developer ever went under, Waste Management Pros still stays in place, operating the sewer system. He has over thirty years of experience. His succession plan, if he were to get hit by a bus, is registered with North Carolina and South Carolina already, so there is a plan in place. It's not that, you know, he gets hit by a bus, this, everything comes to a grinding halt. There is a plan in place to continue operation of the plant. He is working on over one hundred projects currently in North Carolina and South Carolina. He's actually working on a project for me in Indian Trail that we expect the permit to be issued within the next forty-five days. This is a public utility, as Jamie mentioned. The permit is issued by the state of North Carolina. Eric is regulated by the North Carolina Utility Commission. They monitor his books, make sure he's got money in the bank to own, operate, maintain, replace the system if anything were to happen. The rates are actually set by the North Carolina Utility Commission, so it's not that Eric is a private company can go out and set the rates. The North Carolina Board still does that. Great thing is, is the homeowners themselves receive a monthly bill from Waste Management Pros, so it's just like operating with two rivers. They get their monthly bill, just like anyone else. The great thing about these systems is, you know, one, it's a smaller system, so, and they're using the newest, best technology. The effluent treated by Eric and his team is far better than what's being treated at any of the big utility companies. To the point where it's pretty much potable water at the discharge. You're welcome to come out and try it if you want to, I'm going to take a pass, but it is potable water. There's very little smell from the facility, even in the dead of summer. There were some concerns about, you know, discharging into Taylor's Creek, and this map shows all of the major, minor discharge permits that already exist, as well as the non-discharge permits, both major and minor, within a five-mile radius. Some of the dots, the light pink dots, are a little hard to see, but there's at least twenty dots on that screen, so this is not an unusual situation. So that should not bring much of a concern to anybody, it's not an unusual, it's not new. Again, multiple existing discharges. DEQ determines the locations for the wells. We've set three preliminary locations, but DEQ will ultimately determine the final locations and if more or less are needed. But either way, it will not impact the site plan. Again, as Jamie mentioned, we'll have all the permits in hand before beginning construction. We've agreed to do a monitoring system, quarterly, five hundred feet up and downstream of the facility, monthly, two hundred and fifty feet up and downstream, and weekly at the discharge point. Treatment of this effluent is so good, we may actually have to dirty up the water before discharging in order to protect the marine life in the creek and downstream. This onsite treatment facility can be expanded for future growth. Based on the preliminary studies, Taylor's Creek can take up to a million gallons per day. We will be using roughly seventy-five thousand gallons per day, so this does create a huge opportunity for future growth in the county utilizing this system. Aqua Point is the company that actually builds the equipment that Eric uses. These systems, you can kind of see in the background, they don't take up much space. For this particular project, we're talking about less than three-quarters of an acre to treat the seventy-five thousand gallons per day. The key to these systems are the multiple bays and these little white pellets that go into each bay that absorb all of the nutrients and particles from the effluent. And if you want to get some more information, probably more information than you really wanted to know about wastewater, the Aqua Point website is a great resource. I've spent way more time on there than I care to, but it is very informative. Again, these can go above ground, or they can go below ground. The plan right now for our system is to be below ground. And again, Jamie already showed the location of this previously, but just done to show it again. The nice thing about the underground system is that the only thing that would be seen behind fence, behind shrubbery, is this little building that contains the generators for backup power. If anything were to happen, the generators kick on within six seconds, so they're monitored twenty-four hours a day. If there's ever an issue, they can be resolved very, very quickly. Lastly, I want to get into what can be done on this property under the by-right zonings. There's multiple options that can be done through the by-right process. This particular site plan shows a hundred and ninety-four units. And again, this is through the by-right process, not through a rezoning process. Basically, you end up with a hundred and ninety-four home sites instead of the two hundred and fifty-one home sites. The county would lose control over the architectural guidelines. The walking trails and amenity centers would be removed. Far less tree save area, far less common open space. The donation to the school system goes away. Probably end up with lower home prices. Still built with the onsite treatment facilities and wells. And the county would end up losing roughly $440,000 per year in property taxes. When you look at what we're proposing through the rezoning, eighty-four townhomes at $330,000 average, one hundred and five fifty-twos at $460,000 average, and sixty-two foot lots at $560,000 average home price would generate over a million dollars a year in revenues to the county. With the by-right plan, assuming an average sales price of $350,000, it generates $706,000 in taxes and roughly that $440,000 difference. I'm only showing this comparison because basically, Tom and the families are at the end of the road. They have no other options for rezoning, so if y'all decide that this is not the right plan for the county, there will be a plan by right, whether it's this plan or any of the other options that are allowed through the current zoning ordinance. Tom's eighty-plus years old. He needs to get rid of the property, and so really, at this point, it's up to y'all to decide what is the vision for this particular property for Gaston County. And with that, I'm happy to answer as many questions as I can. Sure.
Any citizens wishing to comment at this time on this project? If you'll please step over one by one as you come, just stand up back behind, give your name, address for the record, please.
Joshua Brown, 1149 Knowles Drive, Mount Holly, North Carolina. Been a resident of Mount Holly my whole life, gone past this place. I've seen it during its good times of hay bales and everything like that. One of the things, watching the presentation that I just wanted to bring up and address, is with that being in the county and no fire protection hydrant systems and things like that, just some things to consider. That would probably be one of the largest neighborhoods in the East Gaston Fire Department District that would not have any fire protection with fire hydrants, solely relying on tanker-shuttle operations. With a lot of things that occur with the streets now, double parking, cars on the streets and things, we run into limited access of fire trucks being able to get in, so just some things to consider with that of what, how far away is our hydrant, how many tankers is that going to be? That in turn turns over to what is the staffing of the fire departments that surround that area. That is a special quadrant and district for the East Gaston Fire Department solely because it is so far away from our station, but it sits in between three other department areas. And knowing the resources that we would need to get in there for water supply operations to then be able to get that tanker out of there, back out to a main road wherever a hydrant is accessible, it's going to be a challenge. Depending on the townhomes, you start looking at that, accessibility of ladder trucks to get in there for elevated structures that they cannot reach, in turn causes rapid fire spread. Next thing you know, we've got a conflagration of townhouses or even communities of houses that are close together, all solely because of not having a patent water supply source that's in there. With the city of Mount Holly, some of their larger neighborhoods, they have dedicated fire hydrants in there. So the ability that it offers for those department is, is that they're coming into that neighborhood for a fire, they can wrap that closest hydrant and lay in to that, to that house that's on fire, and the next arriving unit can hook up and send an unlimited amount of water to that fire scene to supply hand line operations, aerial operations, whatever need be. With this, you're the biggest tanker you're going to get in Gaston County. Of the two stations that are going to cover this neighborhood is going to be three thousand gallons of water. And you're taking your travel time, turning around, getting those trucks out, or even just having the staffing to be able to get those trucks coming. It potentially could cause an issue with residents that are there, and that'd be one last thing I want them to think of, is hey, I bought this house expecting to have protection over things like that, and then on their worst day of need, we're not able to get in there and do that just because of the inaccessibility that it offers. Thank you.
Hello, my name is David H. Stepler. I've been in Gaston County for about fifty years. I'm a licensed real estate broker, and I'm from Mount Holly. And that's one reason I'm here, is because they're referring to Catawba Avenue, Catawba Street. And I live on Catawba Street. About a year ago, this same subject came up to about the same-looking property that the Gates or someone owns. It was a hundred-and-some acres, and they wanted to put the, like, the same amount, but then of houses that he's referring to, but it did not go through. And they had a lot of opposition, and so they had, but they still didn't go through, and they didn't, so they didn't get to build it. But for the county commissioners, the county commissioners over the last years have written laws and about zoning and housing and restrictions in an extremely accurate manner, and it's good for the people of the county, and we can appreciate that. And generally, it comes along that they have to take care of is the people go in there and buy the house, and then they move out, and then they rent it, and then you don't know who your next door neighbor's going to be. Generally, crowded areas such as what we're referring to here is, it comes with drugs, and I don't think that's good for the county either. And worse yet is an HOA that comes with every one of them, and I think they push severely the builders so they can own the HOA, which lasts as long as their taxes, their taxes, the county taxes will ever last. They don't, they don't quit, and they have a power to retake your house or condo in like thirty days or sixty days if you don't try, believe it, try not paying the bill for the HOA. The county takes, is more lenient than that. And the HOA, the fees are too high. The investors will come in and buy the houses and then resell them. The parks will be overcrowded, and some of the roads will need to be lights, signs, and extensions. And there's not enough schools in the Mount Holly area to handle just about what they already have. It would just be a crowded community within itself. We're going to need more security and more officers from the county to be over here with this new situation that's coming up. And with the crowds, you also got crime. And that's the ten things I was trying to tell the county that they're going to be looking for, and I thank you so much.
Mr. H. Stepler, can I please get your physical address? Jonathan, if you'll get that at some point. Mr. H. Stepler, can I get your physical address, sir? Mr. Hustedler, can I get your physical address, sir? Jonathan, just take care of that. Thank you, Mr. Hustedler.
Gentlemen, ma'am, commissioners, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Not much of a speaker and didn't come here tonight intended to speak. They say I don't do a good job of it until I do, and then I don't shut up, so we'll, we'll do the best we can. Uh, I've worked in the county for 48-some years in manufacturing, still working manufacturing today. So I know what, and I appreciate the opening, um, uh, prayer with change. Sometimes it's pretty good, and sometimes it's not, and we don't know what we don't know until we know. And uh-oh is the last thing we want to hear in manufacturing when we make, when we make a change. Uh-oh means it's too late, too far gone. That said, uh, I have been, uh, several meetings over the last several years with, uh, this project that's in, uh, discussion tonight, and those were great presentations, and that's a lot of material to take in. I just kind of sifted through the things that stand out to me. I came here with, with two concerns. One is the quality of life and the value of the property around it. Now, we heard comments like the people involved, and that was the Springs, and that's true, but also the people that live around this development are the people involved also. My quality of life concern would be the fact, and you heard the term tonight, very little smell. Now, if I lived across the River Bridge, I would tell you Mount Holly's Treatment Center has very little smell, but I walk the Greenway on a regular basis today, and I assure you, it's not very little smell when I walk there. Not trying to compare those two processes, but we don't know what we don't know. So I would have concerns about the smell during the meetings. We talked with the developers and the people there, and when I asked that same question, kind of got a short answer, so I asked it again, and then I was told, well, maybe on a windy day, you would smell it. On windy day to day, they don't smell that. So I would have concerns of quality of life. Uh, the other thing I heard tonight, because I've been through this process over the last several years, there's obviously a disconnect between Mount Holly, uh, and Mr. Springs and these people. I would challenge the board here tonight, put the burden on them, work it out, because Mount Holly citizens lose if they don't get along together. That means we may not get along together either with somebody. So I would challenge the board to turn that over to Mount Holly and Mr. Springs.
If I get your name and address for the...
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Troy Campbell, 106 Howie.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Allen?
My name is Josh Allen, 116 Fights Creek Road. I'm a resident of Cotaba Acres neighborhood, and I'm, I'm speaking to express my strong opposition to the proposed Holly Springs housing development that is owned by Mr. Springs, that is currently located north of West Cotaba Avenue between Howie Street and Patrick Lane, which is currently under consideration by you commissioners. While I understand the need for responsible growth in our community, I have serious concerns about the environmental and practical impacts this specific development poses, particularly regarding its proposed use of a community well system and a community water treatment system. As a nearby resident who relies on a private well for my household's water needs, I am deeply troubled by the possibility that the high volume of water consumption required for a dense residential development will put an unsustainable strain on our local groundwater resources. The aquifer that serves this area is not unlimited, and introducing a large-scale draw through a centralized well has the potential to lower the water table, thereby depleting or disrupting the private wells that many nearby residents depend on. This could result in costly consequences for homeowners, including the need to deepen wells, install new systems, or even suffer from long-term water loss. Furthermore, while the development proposes to use a community wastewater treatment system, it raises questions about oversight, maintenance, and long-term viability. Small or privately managed systems can sometimes lead to groundwater contamination, if not adequately maintained, which further threatens the safety of nearby private wells and the broader environmental health of our community. In addition to the water-related concerns, traffic congestion is another significant issue. This area is already heavily burdened by daily traffic associated with two nearby schools and the existing infrastructure, which is primarily two, two-lane road, two-lane roads, was not designed to accommodate a large influx of new residents. The proposed development would introduce a substantial number of additional vehicles to these roads, particularly during peak school arrival and dismissal times, further exacerbating safety risks, delays, and emergency access issues. Increased traffic near school zones also raises concerns about student pedestrian safety and road wear and tear that the county would need to address. Given these concerns, I urge the commission to deny the proposed development in its current form, require an in-depth hydrological study to determine the potential impacts on neighboring wells, and ensure any future proposals include public utility connections where appropriate and demonstrate a commitment to preserving existing water access, traffic safety, and quality of life for current residents. This is not a matter of not in my backyard nimbyism. It is about protecting essential natural resources, maintaining safe and functional infrastructure, and ensuring thoughtful, sustainable growth that does not endanger those already living in the area. Thank you for your time and consideration of this matter. I respectfully request that this be submitted for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Honorable mayor?
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, my name is David Moore, uh, and I'm the mayor of Mount Holly. Uh, on behalf of our city council, I'm here tonight to voice the opposition to the Holly Springs rezoning matter. Uh, the city does not support this initiative for several reasons. First, Mount Holly has an active annexation petition with the property owner. The city is prepared to re-initiate the review of the current petition once minor comments from the March 2024 are addressed by the applicant and the next steps in the city's annexation policy are followed. As part of this annexation policy, the city would supply water and sewer service to Holly Springs once the developer agrees to terms laid out in the annexation agreement and council votes to approve this annexation. Mount Holly is in the position to provide these services without the proposed sewage package plant and private water system. The city opposes such private treatment operations within such close proximity to the city limits, particularly given the fact that the city is in a position to provide these services with minimal environmental impact. Next, the city has concerns regarding the quality and quantity of homes provoked, proposed for this development. Although we understand the property owner can build and, uh, a certain number of units by right, it is the city's opinion that the residents of Mount Holly, who are also residents and taxpayers of Gaston County, would be best served by the proposed development falling under the city's review process and eventually served by the city's emergency service personnel. Furthermore, I believe that it is unlikely that the property owner would pursue a smaller project, uh, by the right without the approval of the rezoning request, which is why they are appealing to the commission this evening. We respect that this project is at the discretion of the Gaston County Commissioners, but we ask that you take these concerns into consideration and deny the rezoning request this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Gaston County Commission. I am Jonathan Blanton, and I am the city manager of Mount Holly, North Carolina, 400 East Central Avenue. First of all, I want to commend the incredible work that Gaston County planning team has done on this project. We certainly appreciate the communication, we appreciate the correspondences and having an opportunity to provide information to your planning staff throughout this process. So certainly, thank you for that opportunity. I'm here tonight because last Monday evening, the Mount Holly City Council unanimously voted to move forward with opposition to this project. I remitted an office to Ga, uh, letter to Gaston County on Tuesday. I certainly appreciate the acknowledgement from the county manager and certainly appreciate the correspondences that I received from, uh, several of our county commissioners. So thank you for hearing our concerns and giving me the opportunity to speak a bit more tonight about some of the comments that have been made here. Uh, first and foremost, I want to address the issue about exhausting all options. This project has only formally once been denied by the Mount Holly City Council. This was in 2017. There have been numerous revisions that have been made, that have been submitted to our planning department that has done an excellent job corresponding and communicating with the applicant as we do with any applicant that, uh, requests services through our very experienced, uh, wonderful planning department that's overseen by our planning director of 24 years. I would, uh, underscore that the planning department falls under my control and supervision, and we treat all applicants with the same degree of respect and professionalism without taking into consideration any personal issues that the applicant may have. As I said, this was only denied once in 2017 due to, uh, required improvements that would need to be made under our ordinances and under a developmental agreement. The question that I have heard frequently and that our council has heard frequently, and an issue that was brought tonight, is the issue as, uh, the issue of what is a matter of right? The question that we continue to hear is if the applicant is determined to move forward with this project as a matter of right, why has that not happened since it was denied nearly eight years ago formally by the city of Mount Holly? The last correspondences that we had with this applicant was in March 2024, when we talked about improvements that would need to be made to the water and wastewater treatment plant in order to bring this project online. At no time has the city council said that they are opposed to development on this project or that they are opposed to residential development being made. Second, I want to speak quickly to the issue of ETJ. Certainly, the city of, certainly, the city of Mount Holly respects and appreciates that this is a decision that rests at the discretion of the Gaston County Commissioners. As was stated tonight, the city of Mount Holly relinquished our ETJ in 2018. We relinquished the ETJ because at that time Gaston County had updated their UDOs, their regulations, and they very closely mirrored what the city of Mount Holly required. Therefore, there would be no benefit to seek county approval outside of the city of Mount Holly approval because they were so similarly aligned. That request tonight contradicts the spirit of which the relinquishment of our ETJ was done. We did that because we appreciated that Gaston County had make, had taken numerous strides in order to similarly align with not only Mount Holly, but also cities and towns so that we would not have a situation that we have tonight where an applicant is seeking different treatment by going to the county versus what they would get with the city of Mount Holly. I do want to underscore, uh, the concerns that the mayor made and concerns that our council brought up last week, that being the environmental issue. The city of Mount Holly not only has the water and sewer capability, but we have the availability. In September, we will be decommissioning our wastewater treatment plant, uh, in a transformational regionalization project with the city of Charlotte. One of the tenants and goals of that project was to be able to support future development. With the decommissioning of our plant, with going to the city of Charlotte, we will have more than enough capability to be able to have the wastewater capacity for this development or any development that meets the city of Mount Holly standards and specifications. Also, it is the city of Mount Holly's opinion that we are in a better position to be able to maintain the streets via the Powell Bill Fund Program with the state of North Carolina. We are prepared to work with this applicant in order to be able to ensure that we have a sound developmental agreement that speaks to just that, and again, as was stated earlier, to be able to provide those emergency services. This is literally in the city of Mount Holly's backyard, with even a piece of this being in the city of Mount Holly. We have the opinion that we are best positioned to be able to provide fire, police, and emergency personnel protection for this property. Again, I want to thank the county commission for hearing us here tonight. Certainly, I do want to repeat that we understand, respect, and appreciate that this is a decision that rests at the discretion of the Gaston County Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to go over my three minutes, and again, I appreciate your planning department's efforts on this project, and certainly appreciate and respect the decision that is before the commissioners tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this comment from the citizenry? Seeing none, any questions from the board of commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Mr. Commissioner Hovis?
I have one, Mr. Kimbergeloo, and it's basically technical. It's just my curiosity. In your presentation, the slide, it was titled Overview, talking about Area 3...
Yes.
...being the riverfront Gaston slash northwest Gaston? Northwest?
That might be a typo. Let me double check.
Maybe my geography or, uh, my ability to know which is north, south, east, and west is impaired, but I don't think that's northwest. I think it's northeast.
East, typo, yes.
Just, just wanted to clarify, because I thought maybe there was something that I, I haven't seen. That, just to, I pay attention to your slides, and I just wanted to call that out.
Thank you.
That's my only question.
Well, I guess I have 10,000.
Okay.
So I guess we'll, we'll start at the top and, um, can you talk about by right, what that means for the people who are not in the know of that, and what that means? Because I know a lot of different things. Give you a good example, gravel driveways compared to paved driveways, uh, street size compared to what is being proposed, different things. I know, um, so if you could talk about that first, and that way everybody gets that kind of, at the level playing field, where we start, and then we'll go from there.
Absolutely. So when we have things referred to as a by right development, that is something that the ordinance allows, as it says, by right. So if the applicant was to apply for a by right development, it's going through administrative processes only as opposed to going before a planning and zoning board or before the board of commissioners for some type of additional approval. With a development like this, because it is split into so many already existing parcels, the zoning is already RS 12 and R1, by right possibilities are there. The, um, utilities that are being proposed are by right, um, infrastructure. So if they weren't to do any kind of development, but say the utility contractor wanted to come in and still develop some kind of water intake and wastewater treatment center there, those systems are by right developments, so they would be allowed under essential class services too, and they would come to our office with all the required permits from the state, get a by right zoning permit, and then go straight to building permit for those permits. So that's kind of an example of what it means to be a by right development. They're just going straight through administrative processes.
I guess now we'll dispel some of the issues that happened. Um, for the big thing for me is size of lot.
Yes.
So I think we went from 12,000 as the min to...
To 6,000.
6,000.
Yes.
So that'd be one issue, if you were to start marking them down as we got. If not, we'll, we'll have the record to say.
Right, right.
I think that was one of the issues that were out there. Um, also, fire protection. Uh, I think Mr. Brown, wherever he went, was, was talking about the fire protection. Restricting whether if it's, and I'm not saying it's going to be approved or not approved, but cars in, in the road.
Yes.
Obviously, it's going to be a big issue. How does that, uh, intake?
So with this plan, I did ask the utility contractor if a system like this could support fire protection services. Fire protection services are obviously required under the fire code. Hydrants would be required for this development, just like they are for any other standard development. Along with this, the staff has proposed a condition of approval within your staff packets that says cars would be limited to parking on one side of the road only. Staff did look into that because the proposed roads are 40 and 50 feet wide only, which usually allows for parking on one side of the street and then adequate space for a fire truck, for example, to get through the road without causing any damage to cars on the street or mailboxes or anything of that nature. So we did include that as a, as a proposed condition of approval. Um, but with, in regards to fire protection, it's absolutely required by fire code, so the hydrants would be required.
Some of the other issues that were addressed were, uh, schools?
We did receive a letter from schools. Um, currently, none of them are operating at capacity. The schools that were identified are at less than 75% capacity.
Uh, one of the biggest things that got me was long-term viability. I think maybe Mr. Allen talked about viability and of the wells, and can you address that a little bit on what, maybe Mr. Schreiber has to talk, I don't know that. Obviously, people can have the right to the water underneath their property, so...
Yes.
It, it, that's already there, so we, we have that as, as what's going on. I just want to make sure everybody's on the same field of what we're all talking about before we start decision-making. Go ahead.
So the challenging part with, um, the regulations for the wells and the wastewater treatment plants is a lot of that permitting and review is going to be done at the state level. So again, talking with like the by right development, if they were to go to the state, the state is going to review all of those and issue those permits. It's not coming back to us to say...
And the county does not have any type of that, that is the state itself.
That's correct. The county would participate in the permitting of the wells, as they are community wells, but they are still receiving a majority of their permits from the state.
I know some people had talked about rent. The county does not be, we're not allowed to...
State statute does not allow us to regulate whether or not homes can be rented.
Um, I want to go back to Mr. Blanton's comments, that there was an active annexation permit, I guess, that's actually in the city, correct right now?
Correct.
With that being out there, and I know, I know you guys have said what you, you know, we've talked, uh, many times, um...
Before, any other questions for this board? Mr. Sheehan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Schreiber, can you step up to the podium, please?
Sir.
For a moment. Just got a couple brief questions. I know you had touched on a succession plan...
Yes.
...for the wastewater treatment. What is that plan? Is there any... What is that plan? Is there anything in print that we can have that details out what that plan is exactly?
We can get you the copies that are registered with both the state of North Carolina and South Carolina.
Okay.
Uh, basically, from what I understand, uh, the engineers and other owners in the company would take over until, uh, a viable purchaser could be found to take it over completely.
Okay. And I know the one gentleman, I think, touched on this. Uh, do you have any hydrogeological studies on this land and what this development would do to that water table for neighboring property owners that have private wells?
We do not. Uh, as Jamie mentioned, it's not required by the state. And at this point, um, with this rezoning request, it would cost the Springs over $200,000 to do that hydrology study, and they're not in a position to spend that kind of money. They've already spent over $300,000 to get us to this point. And one quick point that I would like to mention is, uh, I've been very familiar with the open case. They say it's open. We've got an email to the attorney, uh, from Greg Beal stating that if we didn't resubmit within a certain date and meet the requirements, that that was the last time he was going to be reviewing the plan. So we considered it closed because we could not meet what they were asking for.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for the board at this time?
Seeing that there's some loose ends, it looks like we're all up after, uh, would anybody be up for continuing this? Contingent upon what's happening with the, it's over. Um, what's happening with, in that way, give you, I'd like to continue it for two months, see where we stand. Let Mount Holly and you guys go and see what you can come out with. If you come out with nothing, it's nothing. It comes back to us in two months. I think it, it, us getting this, obviously, we, we've learned a lot tonight. There's a lot of stuff in development. I think, uh, Jamie, if you don't mind getting your staff and they can put it together, um, with some of the comments that have happened here, I will ask our board, uh, yes, I need to make a motion with that before, that we do that before we comment on it. Is that correct, Donna? Okay, we're, it's a rare public hearing, so it's still, um, what I'd like to do is have some of our comments and seen to, to our staff. I think there's a lot of questions that, that are, um, in the development overview that, that are there that I think, you know, from, and I'll just be very honest with you. I'm, I'm not, I'm not the happiest about the square footage, but I, you know, obviously we'll have to figure that out and there's some, we've talked about that and I think at a minimum here, we've been, uh, very forthright on what we've been doing. So I want to make sure we keep that kind of good, um, so if you don't mind, uh, this time I'll ask for a motion to continue this until maybe September? What is that, Donna?
September will be two months.
And I want to stay in public hearing, that's why I'm going to continue it rather than tabling, um, 23rd? I'd like to continue this to September 23rd. That way, actually, you can have your, this, this, but I'm just saying...
Can we do it in October?
Three months for October. Did it go with the board? One, two, three? Yeah, we'll go to October, Donna, if you'll find that. That way, we can get some information. We're going to have to have some information, um, for some things, I think, that have come up tonight. Um, and that'll give you guys some time if y'all want to try to work it out between then. It takes it off our, our plate, but obviously, um, I, I want to make sure we state that by right, you have the issue, you can do things. If, if you wish to do them, we don't, we don't, we're not here to tell you what you can and can't do with your own property. Obviously, we want to make sure we, we find a, uh, a happy place for that. But I wanted to make sure before I take the motion that we do tell everybody that the sewer package on water and sewer is given by the state. That is not given by the Gaston County, and we have no way of blocking or issuing anything toward that other than the, the, the property owner themselves. I want to make sure that's out. So October 28th, October 28th, do I have a motion to continue October 28th? Motion made by Commissioner Frayley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Goldberg, if you can just take care of that with Mr. Don on the, the principles of what we need to do to make sure we stay inside of, uh, public hearing. The commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing, zoning map change, REZ-221, Ricky Allen. Ms. Jamie Kimberlou, Director of Planning and Zoning, Building and Development Service, will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Kimberlou.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
REZ-00221 is a general rezoning request from Ricky Allen Jr. for parcel ID 310221. The applicant is requesting to rezone 24.22 acres from the R1 Single Family Limited Zoning District to the R2 Single Family Moderate Zoning District. The subject's parcel is located just north of Dallas on Colt Thornburg Road. The site is currently vacant with no structures. There's a mix of housing types in the area. Um, this includes site-built modular manufactured and multifamily homes as well. The parcel is just over 24 acres. The planning board did have some questions regarding how subdivision regulations would apply to the lot. Staff explained that up to five lots could be created under the family exemption regulations. Any plans showing more than five lots would trigger a major one subdivision review, which would just include, um, NCDOT roads and additional open space and sidewalk standards. A majority of the area is zoned R1. There are R2 and R3 neighborhoods to the northeast of the site. This slide shows who always notified with information about tonight's hearing. Signs and notices were mailed out in accordance with general statutes and local ordinances. Staff has not received any calls or inquiries about this request. These are the property, um, names and addresses associated with those parcels. The site, if developed, would likely have to have a private well and septic system. Colt Thornburg is an NCDOT owned and maintained road. We did not receive the typical letter from the GCL MPO regarding the projects in the vicinity. However, we did look at the project maps and noted that there is a bike route that goes from Cloninger Road to Colt Thornburg and then onto Bob Friday Road, and this has been identified as needing improvement. The subject site is located in Area Two, and the future land use designation is rural, which was the default designation of the county. This future land use envisions lots with homes, large lots set with home, with homes set back from the road they front on. The request was sent to our TRC group and the following comments were noted. Gems asked that there would be clear and ves, clear and visible addressing from the right-of-way for any new homes, and natural resources show that there is a small portion of the lot that is in the special flood hazard area. Staff finds that the request is consistent with the goals and vision of the comprehensive land use plan as it would keep the parcel residential in nature. As with all general rezoning requests, staff is asking that you receive the staff report and provide a, provide a decision to either approve, approve as modified, or deny the rezoning request. The planning board did recommend approval of this request unanimously. And, Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Any citizens wishing to comment on, excuse me, any comments from the applicant at this time?
So, I'm Rick Allen Jr., um, of 306 Colt Thornburg Road. There seems to be a little bit of confusion. All I'm wanting to do is put this trailer there for my parents to live in until the rest of their life comes. I'm not trying to make a trailer park or anything like that. It's just rezoning part of the land for them to be able to move down there and us have a quick place to be able to take care of them. They received a mobile home from a developer in the Dallas area that is actually, was going to demo the property, the trailer, to make a new interest into housing development there. So that's how all this came about, and it was just something that would help us financially also.
And you have something you wish to present, ma'am? Motion to accept.
These are pictures of a...
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor? It is unanimous. Okay, go ahead now, sir.
Um, I'm sorry. The, this is actually a picture of the mobile home that I plan to move out onto the property. I guess that once my parents, you know, their life comes to an end, I plan on tearing it down and building my own house there. So that's what the plan is, and like I said, that's all I'm asking for is just for that one mobile home to be able to be put on the property.
You have anything to say, ma'am?
Yes, Jill Stilwell. I currently have the note on the property, and I'm in favor of him being rezoned.
Okay. You folks just have a seat right there. Any citizens wishing to comment on this issue at this time? Seeing none, any questions for the board of commissioners? Ms. Jamie, our last one.
Yes.
What size is the lot? I, I couldn't see that on...
It's 24.22 acres.
24.22 acres?
Three.
23. Do you have, what was the size?
24.22, but now I'm going to double check. I've got 24.22.
Any other questions for the board at this time? Seeing none, do I have a motion to, oh, the, just to recap, the planning board has unanimously recommended approval of this. Is there a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Cloniger. Is there any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Goldberg, if you'll please remit the statement to, uh, Ms. Buffett, sir.
Yes, sir.
The county commission will now take citizens' comments, public hearing, zoning text amendment. Gaston County's the applicant. Ms. Jamie Kimberlou, Director of Planning, Zoning, Building, and Development Service, provide a brief overview, and once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Kimberlou.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposed text amendments do include changes authorized by Resolution 2025-233 to the Unified Development Ordinance and the Code of Ordinances. This was the resolution that effectively dissolved the county's planning board and the Board of Adjustment to create the new planning and zoning board. Sections are being edited to reference the newly adopted resolution language, and the new text clarifies any references to the planning board and the Board of Adjustment and that they should be interpreted as the planning and zoning board. It also repeals any sections of the ordinances that conflict with the language in the resolution. The planning board reviewed text amendments and unanimously recommended approval for the changes at its last meeting on June 30th. I do want to share that this new board is scheduled for a training session next week with their first meeting on August 4th. We are excited to work with them, and we want to thank you all for the support you've shown for this request. This does conclude my very brief presentation on this one. Um, if you have any questions for me, though, I'm happy to answer.
Any citizens wishing to comment on this issue at this time? Seeing none, any questions for the board of commissioners? If there are no additional comments, I will now declare the public hearing closed. Just to recap, the planning board has unanimously recommended approval of the text amendment. Is there a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Frayley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Goldberg, if you don't mind remitting your statement to the clerk, please. The county commission will now take citizens' map change, public hearing, zoning map change, REZ-220, Karina Guerrero applicant. Ms. Jamie Lizzie, Planner One, Building and Development Service, will provide a brief overview once she has completed her comments. Citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Lizzie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. REZ-25-03-17-00220 is a general rezoning request for parcel ID 179668 located at the 1,200 to 1,300 block of Charles Raper Jonas Highway in Mount Holly. The applicant is Karina Guerrero, is requesting to rezone the entire 2.48 acre parcel from the RS-20 Single Family 20,000 square feet zoning district with urban standards and corridor highway overlays to the C1 light commercial zoning district with urban standards and corridor highway overlays. The subject property is located west of Mount Holly. This aerial photography shows the lot is currently vacant. The subject property is surrounded by commercial, industrial, and residential zoning districts. If approved, any uses allowed in the C1 general commercial zoning district would be permitted in accordance with standards and regulations as adopted in the Gaston County UDO. This map shows who was notified about tonight's public hearing in accordance with general statute. This is a list of the property owner's information for the public noticing. This parcel will be serviced by a private well and septic system and is accessed by an NCDOT maintained roadway. TRC reviewed this project and had the following comments. Gaston County Police voiced concern about noise complaints from neighboring properties and potential traffic issues with vehicles entering and exiting onto NC-27, depending on the type and size of events permitted under the requested zoning. The Gaston Cleveland Lincoln MPO provided a letter stating that according to NCDOT's 2024-2033 stip, there are no funded transportation improvement projects in the immediate vicinity. The Belmont Mount Holly Loop is an unfunded project in the area. The CTP recommends bike and sidewalk improvements on Charles Raper Jonas Drive. These improvements are unfunded. And the MPO recommends widening Charles Raper Jonas Drive to a four-lane divided highway, but this project did not receive funding in the current stip. Staff has received no calls about this case. Subject parcel is located in Area Three, Northeast Riverfront Gaston of the Compton Plan. This property was released from Mount Holly ETJ in 2018 and does not have a future land use designation. The properties within the immediate vicinity are designated suburban development, and staff is comfortable using this land use designation for the property. These areas are significant single-family residential areas that exist around commercial pockets, representing a standard suburban center. It's staff's recommendation that this application as presented is consistent with the goals and uses of the Small Area Plan District designation, and the board, the planning board recommended approval of this request by a seven to zero vote, found that the request is reasonable and in the public interest. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation, and the applicant is here to speak as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Any citizens wish, or any comments from the applicant at this time? Hold on one second. Any citizens wishing, you can vote now.
Joshua Brown, 1149 Knowles Drive, Mount Holly, North Carolina. Um, my property butts up to this just adjacent one parcel from what was the notified residence. Um, Mr. Chairman, you should have received an email tonight from the residents of the Segments at 1159 Knowles Drive, Thomas and Misty, as well as Cindy and, um, Philip Lawland at 1226 Charles Raper Jonas Highway, as well as from myself and a few others. Uh, we are the residents that live right around that area. A couple of concerns with their high-traffic area. Neighborhoods have been built along Highway 27 and Stanley for Mount Holly and Stanley. Uh, increased traffic flow with that three months ago. Uh, Mr. Lawland was waiting to turn into his residence. That's just at the crest of a hill. Um, and he was raringly caused a four-car MBA to do that. We've also had others coming down the hill towards the Westland Farm intersection. There is a ravine drop-off on both sides, and we've had multiple wrecks there before where cars slamming on the brakes, avoiding, have driven off and gone down the ravine and caused further damage to them with that. Um, you know, property values around there, doing that, you know, just down the street of Mount Holly, there's a large, um, uh, shopping center that has retail space that's there. Um, so bringing that out into the county, um, you know, kind of with the needs that would go there, being right beside a residence that has elderly folks that live there, um, just see it as being, one, an issue in the area, increased foot traffic of the things that are going on through there. Um, there's, you know, we've already had issues with residents on an adjacent street there with drug activity, foot traffic coming through the power line rightaways and walking through there, as well as on Morgan Road, which it, which butts up behind this parcel and the CSX rightaway, um, which has known, um, issues with drug trafficking coming over the, the, there, cutting through our property as well as the Segments property. So just with having that addition of change to there, um, just not in support of doing that. And like I said, you should have received four to five emails from the residents around there as well regarding that. Thank you.
Any other citizens wishing to comment at this time? Seeing none, any questions for the board of commissioners? I just have one. And, and maybe, I guess Josh may be the person, is this the same place? This is exactly the same place where the county police had the wreck as well, correct?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So, anyway, um, is the applicant here?
Yes.
I'm Harold Bass, uh, 13...
I'm Harold Bass, uh, thirteen-thirty-four Pfeiffer Road, Kings Mountain.
Was asking, what, what kind of traffic are you expecting in and out of your property there?
Well, what we, what we would like to do is put in a special event venue for weddings, receptions, but it probably wouldn't be more than four thousand square feet property, um, due to how much parking we could probably get in there. So, that's, that's what we're looking at.
Thank you. Any other questions for the board at this time? Seeing none, if there are no additional comments, I will now declare the public hearing closed. Just to recap, the planning board had unanimously recommended approval of this. Is there a motion to approve this? Motion made by Commissioner Keger, seconded. Fails due to not a second, just so you understand that. Mr. Goldberg, if you could please re, give that to Donna for failure to no second. The county commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing, zoning map change, REZ-two-two-four, Matthew Price. Ms. Peyton Wiggins, Planner Two, Building and Development Service, will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Wiggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. REZ-twenty-five-dash-zero-three-dash-zero-eight-dash-zero-zero-two-two-four is a general rezoning request for PID-two-two-two-seven-one-four or one-on-nine Crowder's Creek Road in Gastonia. The property owner is one-on-nine Crowder's Creek LLC, and the applicant is Matthew Price. He's requesting to rezon the one-point-seven-four acre parcel from I-two general industrial with US and CH overlays to the C-three general commercial with US and CH overlays. The vicinity map shows this parcel is along Highway three-twenty-one in between the city limits of Gastonia and the South Carolina state line. This ortho photo shows the subject property in blue. The existing building on site was constructed in nineteen-seventy-two and is classified as a legal non-conforming structure. Surrounding properties are primarily industrial and commercial in nature, including, including businesses such as a transmission shop. The site is currently operating under an approved auto sales use, selling golf carts and trailers. In October twenty-twenty-four, the property owner submitted a request for a special use permit to allow automobile sales in conjunction with a warehouse use on the property. This request was approved by the Board of Adjustment, and the business has been in active operation under those terms since that time. In March twenty-twenty-five, a code enforcement case was opened due to a potential violation of the special use permit. Upon investigation, the code enforcement officer determined that the business was engaged in the sales of building or prefabricated structures, which is not a permitted use in the I-two zoning district. So, to address that violation, the applicant met with staff and determined that rezoning the property to C-three general commercial would be the most appropriate course of action. This zoning designation would allow both the auto sales and retail sale of buildings and the prefab structures, and would bring the operation into compliance with zoning regulations. The zoning map shows the parcel is on I-two along with surrounding properties I-three across Highway three-twenty-one. There's also RMF and R-one within the larger vicinity of the site. This map shows those who were notified about tonight's public hearing. Mail notices were mailed on July seventh, and a sign was placed on site the same day. So far, staff received zero calls about this request. And this chart lists the adjacent property owner's information. The site sits on the corner of Highway three-twenty-one and Crowder's Creek Road, both of which are NC DOT roads. It is served by a private well and septic system for utilities. The Gassing County TRC reviewed this request on June sixteenth, and the following departments had no comments at this time, Building Plan Review and our zoning inspector. A letter from the Gassing Cleveland Lincoln MPO has been included in your staff packet. The MPO stated that the widening of York Highway, US three-twenty-one, is included in the MPO's CTP. However, the typical cross-section for a four-lane divided highway involves a minimum of a hundred-foot rightaway, and the existing rightaway along York Highway is two-hundred feet. This property falls within Area Five, seen at Gaston, Small Area Plan of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The future land use designation is industrial, which states this is primarily for industrial and manufacturing-based uses currently and projected in the future. Staff finds the application as presented consistent with the goals of the future land use designation, and the planning board heard this request at its June thirtieth meeting and recommended approval by a seven-to-zero vote. Mr. Chairman, this concludes our presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you or the board may have.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments for the applicant at this time?
Hey, everyone. Matthew Price, fourteen-forty, Lentz Road, China Grove, North Carolina. Uh, just want to thank you all for having me, and, um, thank you for taking this into consideration, just to make sure we're in compliance. Uh, it started with golf cart sales, and then people wondered, well, I like a golf cart, but how do I get it home? So, let's get you a trailer. Then, they wanted somewhere to keep it, so golf cart went to trailer, then it went to the storage buildings. So, that's kind of just how this dominoed into this. But just wanted to say thank you again for having us.
Thank you, sir. Any citizens wishing to comment on this at this time? Seeing none, any questions for the Board of Commissioners? Seeing none as well, if there are no additional comments, I will now declare the public hearing closed. Just to recap, the planning board unanimously recommended this for approval. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Commissioner Keger, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Goldberg, if you'll please present, uh, your consistency statement to the clerk. Thank you. This concludes tonight's public hearing. Uh, looking for approval of the business agenda, are there any revisions to the business agenda, or any items that wish to be pulled?
Please, 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 just present. Second. Do you wish to pull one?
Yes.
Okay, item J. Commissioner Kloniger has pulled item J, just for you gentlemen. Pleasure to meet you. We're here a motion to approve the business agenda with item J being pulled from the consent Motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Mr. Keger. All, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Uh, approval of the minutes you all provided, draft minutes for the regular meeting, five-twenty-seven twenty-twenty-five, six-twenty-four twenty-twenty-five, six-twenty-four twenty-twenty-five, closed session. Are there any revisions to our here motion to approve the minutes as presented? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. All, all in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry? Yeah, well, I gotta go, gotta do this first. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and change this up, Donna, I'm gonna move citizens' comments behind that, that way we can get that done. Uh, approval of the consent agenda, we're here a motion to approve the consent agenda with item J being pulled. Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Fraley, excuse me, Keger. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Item's pulled from the consent agenda, item pulled was J. Uh, Commissioner Kloniger pulled that. Do I have a motion to get it started? Motion was motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Bailey. Uh, discussion? Mr. Kloniger, item J.
From the, uh, my heart, I feel the need to ask some questions for a better understanding and concern. I, I understand the importance of fiscal responsibility, accountability, sustainability, and save the taxpayer dollars, but I do have some questions in related to this position. Um, the first question is that who, um, uh, who will this liaison position report to?
Uh, Chief Hunter, the Emergency Management Director.
Okay. The second is that job description was not included, and so what does that detail as far as those responsibilities?
Yeah, so, um, just for clarification, this was presented with the fire budgets with the fifty percent accountant in this liaison position, but it wasn't clear, so we decided to put it on the agenda. The position entails, um, as you can, as you guys were, uh, presented, there's seventeen contract fire departments. Um, and there's contracts in there. We have three that currently sign the contract that don't meet the guidelines of the contract with their five-oh-one-three-C, so there's other considerations we have to put on that. So, the position is to, um, help manage the, the contracts, um, build relationships with, uh, the fire departments, um, provide information to the Emergency Management Director and this board on any, um, issues or concerns with fire service, um, to handle the day-to-day calls and, and information, make sure they're in compliance with the contract, make sure they're doing the training, make sure the equipment, uh, is up to date, the certification, um, all of that is, is included in that position.
Okay, I thought I had heard, or maybe I'm mistaken, that that, this liaison would report to you. Is that incorrect?
Correct. It's incorrect.
It's incorrect?
Yeah, it would, it would report to Chief Hunter, who does report to me.
Okay, so has this position been discussed with the fire chiefs?
Uh, it was, so I'll, I've talked to some fire chiefs about it. I don't know all the fire chiefs, and there's times when I've been absent from the Fire Commission, but it was brought up during the Fire Commission and also during the contract discussions with the fire departments.
Okay, so is there a reason that the funds are coming one-hundred percent from the fire tax to fund this position?
Yes, ma'am. So, um, we feel that the, uh, position will deal with all the contract fire departments and dedicate it for them, and there's a funding source for that, and based on, um, the budget constraints that we've worked under, uh, we've provided the fifty percent of the account being paid out of the fire service, because that's what we feel their job would entail, but this would be a hundred percent, uh, dedicated to the fire departments and the fire service, and so that's what those, uh, tax dollars can be used for.
Okay. My concern with this position is the barrier, I think, that it will cause among departments, when in fact, that we should be, we should build links by working together for the common good of all, and how we serve our residents, uh, citizens in the county, but that's just my opinion, but thank you for letting me give my remarks.
Yeah, so, um, yes, ma'am. Uh, you know, Chief Hunter and I try to, every year, meet with the fire departments, um, on an annual basis at their fire department. Due to scheduling and everything, uh, I had to miss some of those meetings. We think it's important to have a dedicated person that they can call. Uh, just the other day, we got an email from a Fire Commission member, and just because of the nature of our jobs, I wasn't able to respond, so we feel like this would help build that bridge and be more responsive to the departments, the Fire Commission, and the Board of Commission.
Anybody else wishing to comment? Mr. Bailey?
Uh, yes, uh, just one quick question. Uh, when we had the breakdown of the, the fire tax, uh, in one of the last meetings, we had, it talked about each individual fire department getting the amount of money.
Correct.
And it was, all the money was accounted for.
So...
So, where does this money come from?
So, it's accounted for in that it was, uh, presented under, let me just see, trying to pull this up. Um, I'll be honest, uh, in the detailed budget, there's the fire department liaison and the accountant, accountant two position at fifty percent, but there's, it's built into what was already approved under the, the, uh, the budget. So, the positions were built into that funding.
Okay, but you said it was at fifty percent. Now you're saying...
The, the accountant? Yeah, there's an, there's an accountant position that would be, uh, under Financial Management Services, that's at fifty percent. The fire liaison would be funded a hundred percent.
So, does that mean that there's two positions going into this position?
There's two separate positions. There's an accountant two, that fifty percent of that salary will be paid out of the, the, uh, fire tax, and then a fire liaison with a hundred percent paid out of the fire tax.
So, is the fire liaison given a car as well?
Uh, that hasn't been discussed, but possibly yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll add the caveat, fire liaison is not given a car. I'll go ahead and put that out there, to, to put that out, if anybody wants to say anything different. I mean, I think we have enough cars that we've been given out, and that's...
During the Fire Commission's conversation, that was not discussed from that standpoint. Uh, this liaison position is to be a first point of contact that's not tied up any of the other things that Chief Hunter's tied up with, or, uh, Mr. Wong. That's the reason we created, and the Fire Commission discussed it, because there's constant need for better communication, and we were not having that under our current structure. And, uh, the system, the vice chair of the Fire Commission is here, Mr. Wyman, as well, but that's where that conversation came about. Uh, the budgets that came back to us from the fire departments, this is, this is a totally new process that they're working under in terms of a line-eyed budget that has charted accounts and everything that they've never had, and they're, there's gonna need to be some handholding, so that we don't find ourselves talking about the budgets for three months as we did this past year, getting it to you guys so late and a not, without a bow on it, so to speak, that we'd like to have. And that's where this conversation came up, and that's where we wanted to have someone who's directly responsible, making a quick response back, and to help these people through the, the increased complexity of, of accounting, um, to a line-eyed budget that has a specific chart of accounts, so that we're not mixing revenue streams within each of the seventeen different entities. That's where that came. As your Fire Commission liaison, I can speak to that.
I guess I have one more question. There's not a, there's not a number on this, of what one full-time employee would be?
So, um, the cost that we estimate with all the benefits and everything is a hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand.
So, why wasn't, excuse me, so why wasn't that included in the information we received?
I'll, I'll take this one. So, um, this is a technical piece of the position, so the budget ordinance has been approved, and so within the budget ordinance, the funding for this position, as well as the partial funding for the accountant, was included within the total number. What we felt like wasn't transparent was that the position itself was not on the new position list, and so we felt necessary to come back and get approval for the position. So, that's why there's no financial information in here, is because the financial piece is already done, and the position itself is what needs to be approved.
I'm gonna ask the obvious dumb question here. So, you're telling me that one position is a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars?
With salary and benefits.
Well, that's ultimately, ultimately the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. I mean, for somebody to come in and be over one department and make a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, that, that ain't gonna fly. I don't care, y'all got to go back and rework that, and I, I don't know how that's gonna come out, but I mean, a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars is, I don't care if you tell me salary and benefits, I mean, we're basically just, hell, why don't we just say it's a million? I mean, it's no different, what I'm saying, we, we gotta figure this out. We can't have somebody come to us and have a board action that has no plan on that. I'm sorry. Do I have a motion to approve this, uh, a hundred percent funded by the fire tax, additional county funds for the Fed, uh, Financial Management Service budget to approve one new full-time position? Do I have a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded. Motion fails due to not having a second. Our next item is citizens' recognition. A portion of the board's agenda is set aside to purpose of allowing citizens the opportunity to offer comments and suggestions. The comment period is not intended to require the commission or staff to answer any questions or provide a response. Questions requiring a response should be answered as soon as possible through the county manager's office. Citizens' recognition tonight will be limited to three minutes. As I call your name, please step to the podium and state your name and address. The first citizen up to speak tonight is Ms. Ann Helms. And Phil, you'll be behind her.
... And, uh, I'm sixteen eighth road dollar. And I do that, until this year, I've had to do a lot of thought to how Gaston County takes care of homeless states. I remember, I heard about Salvation Army shelter places, that's all I'm aware of, here's stuff that provides shelter for homeless states. I've struggled with both admirable and inadequate, but I figured we got caught on part in that place. Then, in the summer of the heat crank up, I started to see images on social media of Gaston County's cruel section. At first, I thought it might be a joke, somebody trying to make fun of Gaston County, but sadly, those two big old fans of the edge of the... But sadly, those two big old fans of the Edelmoons really were our courage to respond to danger's heat. Once again, volunteers showing their action, I believe, which might be a learning. And some city officials have to tell. And the results, however low meaning, was thrown together and led to confusion as a political...
Sniping among city officials. So now here we are, well into July. It's still steaming hot. And we still don't have a good, comprehensive approach to keeping our homeless neighbors safe in heat that most of us would consider unhealthy for our pets. I'm not here to point fingers. I don't know enough to do that, and I'm not sure that's productive. But the county does seem to be the obvious body to take charge of this situation and spearhead a comprehensive, adequate program to support the homeless. I would hope all municipalities, not just the city of Gastonia, would be partners, as well as other agencies, churches, and nonprofits. I would also hope we would take a broad look at how to improve safety net services, increase affordable housing, and otherwise improve people's chances of getting off the streets or never landing there in the first place. And maybe y'all are already doing some of that. But at the very least, please, we really shouldn't be getting blindsided when it gets hot in the winter, hot in the summer and cold in the winter. Thank you.
And I will address some of your concerns during other matters tonight. Mr. Heinley, or is Phil?
Philip Heinley, excuse me. 1414 Edenon Court, Gastonia, North Carolina. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you very much. I don't have anything to complain about. But I, I miss this stuff, man. God almighty, this is, this is wonderful. You know, people expressing their opinions and stuff, it's, it's great, you know? And then you come up with a decision that really works out. It's just, it's just wonderful. But, uh, I, I've always felt like, you know, the whole time I, I was employed, I would like to have time to, to do some civic things, and, and now I do. And I, I work the elections, as some of you know, you see me at the voting booth and stuff like that. And so, uh, thanks to Commissioner Keeger, I ran into him about a year or so ago. And he said, you know, you, you like to be involved in something? I said, yes, sir, you know, economic development, if, if, if that's a, if that's an issue. And our, and our buddy John Lowery was in that position. And I, I said, well, you know, no, leave John there, you know, that guy's knows, he forgot more last night than I know. But anyway, I think he's got some health issues, so he's going to step down. And so Commissioner Keeger was kind enough to ask me, and y'all were kind enough to appoint me to the Economic Development Commission. And, and I, and I really just wanted to thank you. I don't have anything to say other than that. I, I, I love the county. I love doing civic stuff and, and helping out. And so, uh, and, and I, and I do really miss this stuff. It's just, it's wonderful. Thank you. I'd be glad to. I don't have any, any, any questions to me, but thank you, Chairman. Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Don't mean to be too familiar.
I want to tell you, you've been, uh, you must have done something right while you were here.
Oh, God.
Because I want to tell you, everybody talks about what a fine job you've done. We're hoping Matt can fill into a lot of that, but at least you kept Tom straight. That was the hardest job, I'm sure. You still got your hair, so...
Full-time, no. Mr. Keeger looked out for me. I appreciate that.
Well, we certainly appreciate you, sir. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Appointments. Commissioner Fraley?
No appointments or reports, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Phil. I want to reappoint Mr. Chairman, Gastonia County Fire Commission, Mr. Scott, second.
Seconded by Commissioner Keeger. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Bailey?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cloninger?
I've received an application from Chuck... Um, I've received an application from Chuck Ballard to serve on the Equalization and Review Board.
That's a full board. That'd be a full board.
Is that full board? Okay, sorry.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? It is unanimous. It's a full board. She was just doing it. It's all right.
Steer her be.
Yeah, I'll come, but we'll come back to that. We'll, we'll revote on that. It's all right. Commissioner Hovis?
I have none, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Keeger?
Uh, reappoint Dick Romlich to the EDC.
Seconded by Commissioner Keeger. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Uh, I have two. Animal care enforcement application received by Maria Bando. And also animal care enforcement application received by Miss Debbie Clay.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. I have, uh, chair appointments, designations for the 2025 NCACC Annual Comp Voting Delegate, Commissioner Hovis. And Commissioner Keeger?
Second.
Which one wants to be the voting delegate?
We'll figure it out.
Okay. Well, I'm going to make it right now, just so we'll have it. Uh, Commissioner Hovis, you'll be the designate. Tom, you'll be the designate after that, just so we have to have it for Ms. Donna's records. And, uh, I'll second that. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Uh, I have one full board appointment for the Gastonia County Planning and Zoning Board. Application received by Mr. Chuck Ballard. Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Uh, reports done by Mr. Commissioner Sheehan?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bailey?
Uh, yes, sir. They have, uh, just, I was, uh, a gentleman reached out to me a while back. And Gastonia County is starting a, actually, they've already started. It's called the Gastonia County Rugby Football Club. And they're starting youth programs, uh, youth camps on the 29th through the 31st of July, the 5th through the 7th of August. And they're looking for a, uh, I guess a private partnership. They don't have a real home right now. Uh, so, you know, I told him that I would speak out and, you know, request if anybody is, uh, a fan of rugby. Uh, they're trying to get youth involved in it, plus, plus grownups. Uh, and I told him I would mention it. And, uh, I, I used to be a really big fan of rugby, and I think, I'm glad that it's starting to come back. And what? And I just wanted to mention it. So, thank you.
So I'm glad you volunteered to coach this year. That makes me feel good about that. So if you're looking, if you're interested in rugby this year, uh, please see Commissioner Bailey. He can tell you a little more about that. And, uh, I know they're actually looking for places and, uh, opportunities. So, uh, we look forward, if you want to get with, uh, I'd probably get that to Brandon or somebody over at Parks and Recreation, see if I can't throw it out somewhere for you, but, uh, that way we'll have that. Mr. Cloniger?
No, of course.
Mr. Hovis?
I have none, sir.
Mr. Keeger?
Uh, just real quick, I had an email this afternoon from, uh, Dr. Hoosier at Gastonia College that, uh, Gastonia College was, uh, listed in the top 250 of the vocational institutions in the country. That's it.
Thank you. I, I just have one, the, uh, Charters of Freedom. Uh, did a phenomenal job, Commissioner Cloniger. Commissioner Sheehan joined me, uh, over at the, uh, Centennial Area, right behind the Adman Building, so you can go by and see the Charters of Freedom. Freedom is, that's put out there, uh, for all to see on display in a great, wonderful, uh, acumen for, uh, July 4th, and when that happened, the day before that, July 3rd, we had that, the day was over there. So, uh, a great opportunity for that. Want to say thank you to, uh, our first responders and everything they did, uh, during the, uh, 4th of July displays across the county. I see that you all have your fingers and toes, which, uh, makes me feel good for Lampir back there. Sometimes you don't have all of them. But, uh, so we're, we're doing great to keep everybody happy and safe. And, uh, I'm very thankful for you guys and what you did. Uh, managers' report?
Didn't have a report, but, uh, for transparency purposes, I just want to talk through that item just really quickly about what happened with that. So, um, in my proposed budget, that position was not included. So that, uh, we had the accountant position included, but the liaison was not included in my proposed budget. Um, obviously, due to family issues, I was out after that time. That budget was brought back from the Fire Commission, um, requesting that position, subsequently approved in the amended budget ordinance later. We felt like as staff that maybe that was not clear, because it was not in my recommended budget and therefore not listed as a recommended position. So we felt like the board needed to have the opportunity to approve or deny that position, and that's why we brought it back. Um, certainly fine with the board's decision, but just wanted to explain why that was on there, why there was no dollar amount tied to it, since it was already included within the approved ordinance.
If anybody wants to talk about that, they can come back to you, and we'll, uh, have further explanation. Uh, Mr. Goldberg?
No report, sir.
Why?
I can try if you want.
This is the first time we hadn't had a closed session in, in a very long time. Um, other matters, any other matters? What's come before this board? Mr. Bailey?
Uh, yes, sir. I actually have a couple. Uh, it, I guess it was the, one of the last boards. I, I wasn't here. Uh, and I was a, had, uh, been brought up a little bit ago. And I guess now that it's been implemented, uh, on the, uh, park off of South Point Road, uh, the beach, uh, they've started charging, uh, for parking. So I've had a few people that called me. And, uh, some of the concerns was that's the only park in Gastonia County that we charge for parking. And, uh, I talked with the manager briefly about it. And he said one of the concerns was, um, it would be inundated by everybody coming in to park there uh, from other counties. And, uh, actually, York County was brought up as a, as a, an example. And, uh, the gentleman, I mentioned it to him, and he showed me, as of July 1st, a couple of the York County, uh, beach parks have waived all of their parking funds or parking prices for their county residents. And one of the things that I would, I don't know exactly the process, what we would do, but would, could we consider, uh, waiving parking fees for Gastonia County residents for that park?
Yes, that would be the board's discretion.
I think what we'll do is just take that into consideration now. And if we can get together, you and Matt, I think there's other considerations. I think that's how they're funding the, uh, employees down there, if I'm not correct.
It is what pays for the employees down there.
If y'all could, too, could we could work that out and see if we're, yes, Commissioner Sheehan?
So there was two full-time and one part-time employee? Um, probably roughly a little bit over 120,000. So we really don't know yet. That's the other thing, is because they just started charging, um, July 1st. Um, we had to open some last year, and so the general fund really bore that expense. But we were working on getting, you know, all the mechanisms in place to start the charging. Last year, Ebenezer Park, um, is the one Commissioner Bailey's mentioning in York County. They charged in-county and out-of-county residents last year. They were charging, um, a fee like per person. We were implemented a fee of $7 per person, or sorry, per car, not per person. Um, and we spent the last few months getting that into place. And then they've subsequently changed their fee schedule to where they aren't charging in-county residents, but they will be cha-charging out-of-county residents. And so we could look to do a similar model here, if that was the discretion of the board. Um, and we would just have a higher fee for, you know, folks that were out of county.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions about this? Yep, Commissioner Hovis?
Just an observation. I think originally, when we talked about that fee structure under the fees, it was try to cost-recover, uh, our additional costs, because at other parks, we don't have that type of volume that we expect at this one, because of the water amenity, without question. And, uh, it was said, if I'm not mistaken, in our discussion, it was said that it was to be evaluated at the end of the year to determine the volume of, uh, traffic and the, and the cost to see where that bore out. Because we've tried to make all of our fee structures in all departments, not just Parks and Rec, to be cost-recoverable. We, we try to recover the cost of those services as much as possible so the citizens don't bear that on the property tax. And that was the discussion, and since it's so new, and we didn't know what volume of success or failure we were going to have with attendance, it was put in place that, that, with that fee structure in mind, paralleled to York County. Now, obviously, we never know when somebody else is going to go do something different. I understand that. But it's, it's definitely something to consider. And I think it was always temporary to be evaluated, as we do all of our fee structures, on an annual basis. Thank you.
Any other, Mr. Bailey?
Uh, just one more thing. Uh, the, uh, and again, this is things that's been brought up to me, and I've, I've told them I'd bring it toward the board for questioning. Um, and this is for the recycling centers in Gastonia County. Uh, I, I know we're in the process of evaluating some of the stuff. We're looking at a, uh, we're still at the garb card program, but we're looking at a kiosk, what I was, I was looking, uh, what I was being told. And, uh, I can understand paying fees at the, the landfill for commercial taking things in there. Uh, but some of your recycling centers to where, um, you know, people in the county is taking stuff and we're charging them, uh, just a question, because they're already paying taxes for that. And now we're all, also charging them for garb cards, and then eventually, and we were talking, we were talking about kiosks. How much are the kiosks costing, uh, to put trash there? You know, uh, you look at the price comparison. Are we making money? Are we losing money? Is, are we breaking even? And if we're breaking even, why, why charge anybody anyway? Uh, just something for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Bailey, what we do with all of our green box sites, if you bring a certain level of plastics, cardboard, glass, tin, the garb card fee for putting your trash in the trash receptacles is waived. So you don't have to have a garb card if you bring the recyclables. The garb card is there for those people who bring, uh, both commercial, uh, trash and other things to our green box sites, instead of paying someone to come to their business or whatever to do that. And that's where the majority of that refuse comes from. I, as a citizen of Bessemer City, have used the green box site at Tryon, uh, every six weeks. I go there with, uh, uh, 12 one-gallon milk, four-gallon milk container plastic boxes with plastics, tin, cardboard, and other things. And I take none of my garbage there. And by doing that, I reduce my waste pro curbside pickup for the city of Bessemer City to one can every four weeks. So I'm helping extend the life of the landfill. At the same time, I'm diverting some of these products into a, a second lifespan, so to speak. Uh, I too question about the kiosks and a card, debit card type system for replacing the garb card. The garb card has worked, and Mr. Heinley was here. He would remember when that was created, because I was chairman of the Solid Waste Advisory when we created the garb card. Because I didn't want, uh, these retired people who work maybe 15, 20 hours a week at our green box sites to get hit over the head for $15 of cash to be exchanged. And the garb card carries no cash value. Uh, that has been very effective for us as the county, and it's been low cost. And I too would like to know how that worked. And I've asked the question when we get, go to that, to give me the breakdown of how we're going to do that and how that's going to work.
Mr. Bailey?
Uh, yes. Uh, I guess something maybe has, have changed, because a number of the people that has contacted me, uh, are commercial landscapers or, you know, work on yards. They're being told that they can't dump at the recycling centers anymore. They're having to go all the way to the landfill. So for, for business purposes, I think it may have changed. I'm not sure.
The commercial waste is, the commercial people are supposed to go to the landfill. What I was, the garb card I was saying was small mom-and-pop type operations that don't contract with someone to provide a yard waste container, that, you know, there. And that, and we do have some of that. I see that every Saturday when I go.
I think one of the things you have to understand is the people who are buying the garb cards are not in a municipality where a municipality may provide that service that you pay for. And it's an extra service. You know, I live in Stanley. I pay, uh, an extra service to actually have Stanley pick that up as a receptacle. The people who are talking, um, it sounds like to me, and I, and we can always get into it later, was the people who are outside the county who don't have that particular waste. And they have, that's why those are provided, uh, the garb cards to be able to take that to somewhere to go. The other part of that is, any commercial, uh, person who is doing that needs to go to that, because, um, they're actually picking that up probably at a, a higher pace than, um, what those receptacles are for. But that's just, any other questions on this?
Uh, Mr. Chair, one. Uh, the math just doesn't seem to be adding up. Matt, if you would, could you send an email out to all of us about a new hire at 60,000 or 70,000? How it's costing 125? Is that the number I heard?
Sure, absolutely. And I'm going to make an assumption here, but I'll give you a, a answer tomorrow. I'm assuming that probably included a vehicle cost, is why it got that high.
Yeah, because I was having trouble with that. So, thank you.
I'd like that not to include a vehicle.
I understand that, yes, sir.
All right, I'll go, any other matters, need to talk about that, I'll go ahead and go, anyway. Commissioner Hovis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In our last meeting, we were discussing the new positions added to the Sheriff's Department to handle the flow of additional courtroom activity here at the courthouse. And I had asked for data that would explain why, where we were before and what we've added and where we are now in terms of courtroom utilization. I haven't seen any of that, I think we all received a, a letter from Travis Page that made some comments about some other things that have been added. But to me, I try to be data-driven. I wanna know that we were at eighty percent occupation of courthouse courtroom time. If we're now, if we're at a hundred percent, you know, that would kinda justify some of that understanding. Everything we need, we need to do needs to be measurable. Since that conversation, I've also heard that we also have some other surplus vehicles that are, uh, bouncing around in the, in the Sheriff's Department that are inactive that, uh, that we didn't need, but now we've reassigned part-time people to vehicles in your conversation about people having vehicles. Uh, I've heard the number is something, somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen or twenty. At the same time, we are responsible for understanding what takes place. Uh, we have a county police department that is supposed to handle, uh, traffic. That's not one of the primary requirements of the Sheriff's Department. And running radar is a traffic function and I know we're running radar. And I, they may be doing it to meet the governor's crime convention certification, which does require them to have some training in that area and that's fine, don't have a problem with that. But that should be coordinated with the county police that normally takes care of those functions, uh, from the county standpoint. Uh, I, I've got several detailed questions and I've gotten absolutely no response from anybody in the Sheriff's Department giving a breakdown of where we stand with those needs. And I'm not saying it doesn't exist, I'm saying we need to be data-driven. We talk about being data-driven on everything else with our other county departments and even though the Sheriff's Office is not a county department, it's funded as a county department. We're the ones who write the check, we give them the funding. So with that being said, I'd like a further, I'd like some more details, I wanna see what's done. And I'll be glad to bring that back up since some people were a little disappointed that we didn't vote at the last meeting. I'll be glad to bring that back up if, if the board so entertains to vote to cut those positions until we receive documentation and justification for that, uh, action at this point in time. So if you'd like that in the form of a motion, I'll make it in the form of a motion again. I'll make that in the form of a motion that we delete those positions barring some justification for why they're truly needed with factual numbers of courthouse occupation in terms of activity in courtrooms and those type, details, I want details, all I'm asking for is details. And since we're responsible for the money, I don't think that's asking too much from the Sheriff's Department to provide those details. And that is in form of a motion.
Mr. Chair? Let me get, oh, go ahead.
You need a second for discussion.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Hovis to cut the five positions in the courthouse due to...
Lack of detail.
Lack of detail for that, I know we had, um, I'll leave that as the motion, but then we'll go to the discussion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Keeger, discussion, Commissioner Sheehan?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I know Chief Deputy Wyatt is here, maybe he can speak on some of this, but I, I think we would be doing a disservice if we did not at least involve a conversation with the sheriff himself before we progressed on that motion. Uh, he is the one that would have that information and I think that we, uh, certainly need to give him proper time to, uh, explain that to us unless Chief Deputy Wyatt can come and speak for him. But I think, uh, we still need to hear from the sheriff himself.
Uh, no, no argument on my point, I'm just saying we asked that last week and we've gotten nothing. Last month.
Chief Deputy Wyatt?
The sheriff, he could have given an idea of personal matter, taken care of, but he doesn't have the information as well. He should have it within, um, I'd say a few days, if that's what you need. But just going, you, you mentioned the letter that, um, District Attorney Travis Page sent you and it did mention the creation of new courtrooms that have been added. Also, um, you know, there have been, um, no additional deputies that have been assigned to the courthouse since two thousand. So, uh, with the population growth, there's more court cases that are going on within our courthouse. And so, uh, that's just a, a small thing that's going on, uh, within the courthouse. But, but sheriff will have those, uh, documents to you, uh, shortly. And, uh, real quick, just to mention the vehicles, uh, I've been working with Fleet. We, we do not have, uh, over fifteen extra vehicles. That's misinformation, so that's been addressed with the, um, with the garage and with Fleet.
Mr. Bailey?
Uh, yes, I know, uh, I've, I've read the letter that was sent by, that was signed by Travis Page. It was also signed by Judge Hoyle, uh, the chief judge. And I think they pretty much, from what I understood, they, they stressed the need for extra deputies. And I, I think one of the things that what I had said before also, and I think they had stressed it also, those positions added was an immediate need during the budget time and, and they were passed in the budget. And when the fifth floor is open, you know, there's going to be additional positions needed. You know, this might, you know, smooth the transition, but, uh, you know, I retired from the sheriff's office almost ten years ago and they were short-staffed then at the courthouse. And they haven't added any, you said, since actually two thousand.
No, and I think, you know, in the past, we used a lot of, uh, halftime deputies that would work the courthouse. Retired deputies or retired police officers would come and work the courthouse. With the implementation of SROs, these retirees have been going and working in schools instead of coming to work in the courthouse. So, uh, where we had eight to ten halftime deputies that could assist with the operational needs of the courthouse, we now have three halftime deputies, uh, that help out.
Mr. Bailey?
Just to add to that also, um, I know the, the jail population has, you know, pretty much steadily increased through the years also. And used to, you know, we would actually pull deputies from the jail to help out with the courthouse. And as that population is growing, our deputies and, or detention officers transporting people back and forth, uh, you're now, the population is where is that, you, it's hard to pull from the jail now. It's, it's actually hard to pull from the road. Uh, when you have as, as many civil process, the paper's increasing year after year. It's, you're falling further behind. And if civil papers are not served in a timely manner, uh, chief, if you don't find, I mean, the sheriff can be fined for not serving civil papers. So, I mean, there's a number of things that were, you know, and I think, you know, Mr., uh, Commissioner Hovis had, had talked about it, you know, uh, the county police's job. The, the sheriff's job is serving civil, civil papers.
Correct.
Taking care of the jail, uh, and, you know, safety for the courthouse. And if we don't have enough people to do that, you're, you're risking officer's safety in the jail. You're risking the, uh, officer's safety and the, and the public's safety in the courthouse. And also with your deputy sheriffs, if you don't have any backup for civil process on the road, you can be endangering their safety also.
Any others? I want to address this, cause this big elephant in the room has been here for too many months. A, we have five positions that were put into the budget pending the state budget, correct, Mr. Manager?
There was a request to the state.
There was a request, that's correct. The courthouse has not opened a new fifth floor, hadn't opened up a new courtroom. If it did, still under the same hours of eight to five and those people still have to work from eight to five. So I'm inclined to figure out, to cut the positions now, we figure it out as we go forward. I've seen this over and over and we have more deputies on the road for the county sheriff's office than we do the county police who's supposed to be doing that interaction of law enforcement. You said SROs, that should be under the county PD, that's three places I think that we could put into the courtrooms if that's what's needed. We need to take some of these people off the road and put them into the courtroom if that's where we're having problems. If we don't have it in the jail, which I keep hearing, and that's the problem cause everybody in the jail keeps screaming at me every week that there's not enough staff in the jail. We don't get to tell people what to do over there and I'm not trying to tell anybody now, but I will say this. We do give a budget and that budget has always been maintained through what's happening. But we have not yet to open up a new courtroom in this place. We haven't even come close to opening a new courtroom. So I don't understand how they can say they've added two new courtrooms, but yet it's still eight to five. I, I don't figure that out, I'm not, I'm not trying to say...
Well, they've added a new Superior Court judge, we went from two to three.
But what I'm trying to say is, they're not coming in here having court. They're not opening a new courtroom, they're in the same courtroom, so the same deputy should be able to go, because if they didn't open one, they should be able to go from one spot to the next, that's just what I'm trying to get at.
No, that's, that's incorrect, it depends on if there's, um, criminal trials going on. You have to have two deputies in Superior Court, just not one deputy. Uh, if, if a deputy leaves the courtroom and goes into the holding cell to bring inmates out, who's in the courtroom at that point? There's no deputy in the courtroom if you only have one.
How many people do we have on the road? Cause I can guarantee you, there's been people reassigned during all this.
About twenty?
Twenty. I guarantee you, that's twice as many as we have with the county police out there. And I, and I'm, I'm just tired of fighting this battle every week. And I, and I'm, I'm finally just figuring it out, we gotta figure out what's gonna happen inside of this place. Whether it be, the sheriff's either gonna have to figure out how we can do it because we don't need that many people. We had six people on the road today, I went past a wreck today on eighty-five and there's six sheriff's office cars out there with it.
Transport vehicles, yes.
I'm sorry?
Transport vehicles, yes. I mean, that's not, that's not light rail road deputies, that's...
Did the, who wrote the accident report?
Sergeant Carson, I believe.
But it wasn't the state troopers?
Well, the state trooper was the one who did the wreck report, Sergeant Carson did the HR one hundred.
What I'm asking is, we have gotten so far out of touch in what's going on here that we are not doing the right thing as a part of what's going on by statute. I find out we had an issue and I've talked to the sheriff about this at times. We had an issue to where we're having fifteen to twenty people pulled over that have run radar. We have fifteen, twelve people who have radar training. Why?
That's incorrect.
No, it's not incorrect. How many do we have? No, no, hold on, how many do we have? Cause whatever it is, it's one too many because we don't run radar. We do it for the governor's crime safety prevention that should be set, and that's what I'm trying to say. You wanna know why everybody's fighting? That's why, because we can't ever figure out what's going on in this county. We have a great system, we have the best sheriff, we have the best police department we could ever have. But we can't get along because we keep having these ideas, it keeps happening. And, and you can't sit there and tell me we haven't sent people to training for radar school, cause we have. That's costing the county taxpayer money. And, and I say that because I'm tired of every week that this issue gets brought up. This is not against the sheriff, it's not against the county police. This right here is about everybody working together and I'm tired of it being the bull in the china shop in the room. We gotta figure this crap out and if we don't figure it out today, we ain't ever gonna figure it out. And I'm not picking on you cause you're my friend, I love you to death, but we gotta figure some stuff out and quit fighting. And I'm tired of the fight going on in this county over two departments. And I, and I'm, I'm not gonna see it happen, I'm gonna make sure I stand up now. I wanna see, I wanna know, A, how many people we have running radar? That, that have run radar, cause on, on the check, when we did the check, there was four people out there running radar that did twenty-one pullovers over here on Ozark on July fifteenth. Then I wanna know how many surplus cars we have and I wanna have this information by Friday. We should already know because I think Scott and Marty, you submitted that, correct Scott? So we should know that, if that's not right, then we need to fix it. We gotta get this crap fixed, we gotta get it fixed right now because at, at some point, this county's gonna take over and we gotta have the taxpayers back in the lead of what's happening here rather than what's happened. That's not to pick on anybody, it's to say, hey, we got to row in the same direction. And that, and I'm gonna put that on you to start whatever we gotta do to make it happen. If Vincent needs to sit there and get in people's check, let's see, let's see what happens. Cause I mean, I'm tired of hearing it, I'm just being honest, I'm tired of hearing it. I got eight calls today about a, and you tell me, so we had a transport, I don't know what happened. I just know that I rode by and we have all sorts of people calling me saying, there's eighteen B cars.
Yes, because it was transport vehicles that had inmates inside of them, we had escorted inmates.
Were they, were they sent to the hospital?
Some of them were, yes.
Okay.
They were federal inmates.
And who pays for that?
The feds.
But I mean, the feds pay for the hospital and all, I mean, I, I don't know how that works, I'm asking, I know we, we bring them here, we house them, we get a different pay. But what I'm saying is, I'm just being honest, Scott, I mean, I, this Chad in here, I ain't picking on him. But what I'm trying to say is, I've talked to him, we have a SWAT team, that we, we cater with the dang city of Gastonia. That's gotta stop. We have the county police, we don't need to be over there up everybody in the city of Gastonia's tail, we don't need to be there anymore. We don't need to be running radar, if we gotta run radar, call Chief Zill and say, hey, where can we run radar? If he says he ain't got it where we go, then you call him. But we gotta start working together. And I'm tired of, I'm, I'm sick and tired of, every day I get a call about the county police or the sheriff's office and something happened. There's a lot of stuff I wa, I wanted, I wanted to discuss, but I'm not gonna discuss it in here. I'll make sure we get it behind some closed doors where we can figure this out on what's happening. And if any commissioner wants to say, I know Commissioner Sheehan said with the last time we had this, but this has gotta stop and it's gotta stop now. So there's motion on the floor to, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Hovis.
Well, the only thing that I was trying, I wanted to say to add to your conversation is, we need to be data-driven, we need to understand the numbers. And if our courtroom activity is up thirty, forty percent, that should be easy to be fined because how many cases were tried and we need to keep up with that on a routine basis. Data-driven, that's all I'm asking. Because obviously I want people that come into this building to be secure. I don't want the public to be in danger and if we're not doing the right thing, that very well could happen. And I'm very concerned about that. At the same time, as we move forward with additional work on the fifth floor and, and that's nowhere in the immediate sight, it won't happen while I'm seated at, seated at this day, it's probably. Because that's not, that'll take five years to make that happen. But what I'm, what I'm trying to say is we need to find metrics to keep up with what that is along with the people that are doing traffic. Chad's exactly correct. We need cooperation by two entities that we fund and it seems like it's always a contention. And I think that's what Chad's trying to say, is we need cooperation instead of finger pointing. And that's, and, and that's in the whole county's interest, not just my personal interest or Chad's or anybody on this board. And, uh, find ways to look at data and that's what I asked for a month ago and I've heard nothing. And if the sheriff has that information, that's great. I welcome that information to see what the previous state was and what our current state is. Thank you, appreciate you speaking to that.
Yes, sir.
Motion made by...
Motion's on the floor.
Seconded by Commissioner...
Keeger.
Keeger. I'd like to make an amendment to this motion to make it, well...
Go ahead.
Oh, no, I wanna make it come back in December.
To revisit, to revisit it.
This in December.
Okay, so we're gonna take it off now and we'll revisit it in December, with the data, with the data.
And the data, and then if they need people, we can easily insert that in.
We can put it back, that's right. I have no problem with that. I have no problem with that amendment, do you have a problem, Mr. Keeger?
No, but I, I, what I was gonna say, and I appreciate what everybody's saying, but I really don't think we should be having this conversation without the sheriff being here.
I agree.
I, I think that's a little disrespectful on our part. And, uh, but the reason I did second this originally is that Bob's a hundred percent correct. We're gonna sign off on hundreds of thousands or a million dollars, we need to know where it's going. And like he said, you find out how many court cases are in there today, how many were in there a year ago, two years ago? We can figure it out.
As long as we revisit it, I think we're doing the right thing. And that's what I'm asking.
I, I said I had no problem to the amendment.
I'm just clarifying.
No, no, I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
To clarify what's happening-
And we can revisit it all the time.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis to cut the five positions until we find out more information about that revisiting in December of 2025.
Correct.
Seconded by Commissioner Keger. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Five-two, Madam Clerk.
I wanted to bring up something that has been circulating for some time now to where the county continues to be the brunt of the black eye for everybody's issues. Ms. Helms brought up the homelessness situation tonight, so I'm gonna address a few things on it to have that. The shelter in 2023 was run by the sheriff's office to do that. And I want to say gyms was involved in that, I'm not sure who the other one. In 2024, Salvation Army was the entity who put on the cooling station assisted by the Gassen County gyms and health and human services, which we provided fans. It's in the same place as the Salvation Army. 2025, we're back to the same place as Salvation Army. The city, Salvation Army obviously closed up, closed shop. The only thing we provided over the last couple of years was two fans and that's what we have available. And also, I think we gave maybe a tent last year that is no longer in use. So those were the issues. We have been a partner, not a known entity to start what those issues were. The city of Gastonia received a substantial amount of federal funding through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, specifically through community development block grant and home investment partnerships. Over the past several years, the city has received more than eleven million dollars in HUD funding, including additional resources from the community block building grant, COVID relief funds, and HomeARP, which is American Rescue Plan. For example, in 2021, the city received seven hundred eighty-six thousand dollars for the community block, development block grant and six hundred fifty-four thousand for the home grant. Two point eight five million for the community COVID funds. 2024, the city was allocated seven hundred and eight thousand dollars for the community development block grant, five hundred sixty-one in the home grant. These funds are intended to support critical community development needs, including affordable housing, homelessness prevention, yet despite significant investment unmet needs remain visible throughout the city and county. While the county, while the Gassen County collaborates with local partners to support broader human services and intimate, and important to clarify that the CDBG, the community development block grant and home funds are awarded directly to the city of Gastonia, not to the county. As a grantee, the city holds a primary responsibility, let me say that again, the city holds a primary responsibility for how these funds are used, supported, vulnerable populations, including those facing homelessness. To date, the city has used a portion of these funds to support emergency shelter operations, down payment assistance, rental assistance, affordable housing. However, given the scale of the issue, the level of federal investment, there is a growing expectation that the city do more to provide substantial and sustained coordinated, transparent leadership in homelessness. Once again, Gassen County collaborates with partners only in the things that we can do, such as giving fans. We have no building that we could use in the area for that, so we're having to ask the city, how can we help to provide fans? Maybe we could provide, I think we do provide gym support to doing some of these things. But addressing homelessness is not solely a county-wide and regional issue. It's a challenging issue that responds to strong municipal response. The city of Gastonia has the resources and tools to expand affordable housing, invest in supportive services for homelessness, building partnerships with nonprofits and community continuum of care. What's needed is now is more focused strategic approach aligned with those funding measurables and outcomes for those meet, for those in need. So what I will say, we were approached by the city of Gastonia because we don't have a facility in which someone can go indoors. We were asked to help and provide the same assistance that we had done in the past, which was the fans. Just to recap, since prior year in 2019, seven hundred forty-five thousand dollars in the home grant and six hundred seventy-one dollars gone to the community development block grant. Twenty, in year 2020, eight hundred and five thousand dollars in the home grant, seven hundred, six hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars going to the CDBG. Also in 20, they received eight hundred seventy-one thousand in COVID grants. And then in 2021, they received seven hundred eighty-six thousand, six hundred fifty-four thousand, and two point eight five million dollars in order to address homelessness and other occurrences from the HUD facility. 2024, just because all those are numbers that keep going, over eight hundred thousand dollars have been given to Gastonia over that time. Mr. Manager, how much has this county received in those funds?
Zero.
Zero. So when people ask the county, what you've done for me lately? We went back and we looked, I think over two million dollars we've given of your taxpayer money to homeless needs, things that happen in this community, things we can do to help others. So the number is two million dollars and I think we've given that out to city of Gastonia. We've given it out to people who have requested that through different things. We also give it to the news. So when people ask what the county has done, we've done a lot. And we're continuing to do what we can. We do not have an indoor facility. The city has community centers. They also have, we have asked them, why not send them down to Sims Park? They have the greenway, a safe way to get to Sims Park. They have the fans that can lower the temperature over fifteen degrees. They can use the cooling stations there, but has yet to be used. When you ask, what can we do? We have, the libraries are open, people can go to the libraries if they need that type of assistance to get out of it, but we don't have that type of facility anywhere in Gastonia. So we've had to partner with everybody we can partner with and the city of Gastonia, ask us, what have we done in the past? We put the fans out. So when people want to say, have you done more? You tell me where we can put you. We can't put you in a building with employees. We can't put you in different places other than places where they can come in and stand and do things. So when people ask what the county has done and when I hear the city dius want to put the blame on the county, we'll take the blame, but we'll also provide you with all the facts of every dime they've had that we have to pay your hard-earned money and I could put a billion dollars at it and still not gonna make a dent in it. The problem we have is people who are homeless either want to be homeless and don't want to be helped, or they want to try to get there. And the taxpaying citizens of Gassen County are working hard and this board up here works hard. I'm gonna tell you, our first responders work hard, our health and human services work hard to partner with anybody who wants to partner. If somebody has a problem, they can go straight to this building next door and they can apply for anything that assistance will give them and we'll let them, help them any way we can. We have, we have hundreds of people that sit in that building waiting to assist someone. So I say that to what have we done for homelessness? What can we do better? We can all do better. The community partners can do better, the churches can do better, the business offices can do better, but the city can do better too. So when they want to point the finger, we'll take the blame. Commissioner Hovis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When the county took the agencies that were providing these backdoor services to help this part of our population and created the community support services office over here on Airline, that was an attempt to bring a one-stop shop. You could go in there and see all the different agencies amongst the Department of Health and Human Services that offer these services. And that was to try to help make it simpler and less evasive for people who needed that help. And we tried that. And it didn't produce the positive results that we expected it to have. And all of those people who were in that department that were put together in that one location were offered jobs with the county, all but two took those jobs back into their home agencies. And those services are still being provided today. You would think that when we closed that office, that we just quit doing all of that stuff and there's nothing farther from the truth. Other elected officials from this dais have made that comment when we closed community support services, that we quit doing that stuff. And that is not true. That is not a fact. Chairman is a hundred percent correct in that statement. But we have a concern, our community has a concern, as demonstrated, and Ms. Helms is aware of this as well, she spoke to it, that turned out of the support community from our churches and other agencies when all this came about, when we started trying to recognize that this is gonna be a long hot summer, no pun intended, a lot of people showed up. Mr. Keger showed up to help move cases of water. We care, we care, but at the same time, to think that we've turned a deaf ear to this and it's the county's responsibility in totality is nothing further than the truth. And I think everyone on this board is in agreement with that statement. If not, please speak up to that. But I just, Chad's right, we need to work together. We don't need to point fingers. I'm not pointing fingers. I'm just stating facts and that's what the chairman was trying to do. We all have to work together. This is our county and we all collectively have a responsibility. Thank you.
Since the pandemic started, over twenty-five million dollars in emergency rental assistance had been gone through this county to be processed through this county. Twenty-five million dollars. It was the pandemic to prevent homelessness is how that was labeled at that time. So I think we also, if I'm not mistaken, it's either United Way or the Community Foundation in which we give money as well to 501Cs to make sure they supportive of what happens throughout our community giving. We did that in order to keep every, each commissioner would have a way to have fundings for people who came to them to ask them for assistance. We've had Bountiful Blessings, we've had different churches, we've had many different assistance programs, but that's an annual gift that we give as well. So the communities, when we talk about what happened in the cold weather shelter, people soon forget where that started. Started at the farmer's market on a slab of ground. I think Mark, I called you one night, was it fifty? Hundred? Hundred cots we sent over? Blink of an eye. I called the manager, the manager called Mark. We got it over there to help suffice for some of these issues. We try our best. Do we get it right all the time? No.
We also had the trailers.
That's right. We provided the community trailers for washing assistance, for washer and dryer. We got the shower facilities, but yet nobody wants to think about that when it comes to what the county's done for the good of the community because it's always kick the can down the road, blame somebody else. But I can say this, these numbers right here don't lie. When somebody's getting over, it looks like over ten million dollars since 2019, and I can guarantee you, I can provide any record, you won't show, we've spent over two million dollars of taxpayer money and twenty-five million in COVID assistance to hotels and different ways of providing food and different entities. So I want to make sure that before we leave this room tonight, everybody has a chance to talk about this because they're not gonna come kick the can down the road and keep blaming the county. It ain't gonna happen because I'm gonna spit facts and if they want me to keep talking about it, I've done it on the news, I've done it from this dius, I've done it to them, I've told every one of them, how can we help? I was so proud of Steve Eaton and Vincent the day they went over there and made this deal because they came back to me smiling saying, hey, we're gonna find something that works. Mark doesn't have the authority to open a building that we don't own. Mark is not a weatherman, so for him to be any expert, he's the expert, not in weather, he's the expert on fixing you when you get hurt or when something happens. That's what he's an expert in. He ain't an expert in what, ninety-five, ninety? I don't care. It's hot outside, we all have to live in it, but there's places that we could do. If we want to work together, somebody be the first to step up and tell me what we can do better because I can show you two million dollars worth of stuff that we've done to try to make sure we help it and I could give you two billion dollars and still ain't gonna make a dent. Anything else for common good of the board tonight? Mr. Bailey?
Yes. I've been using some of our new computer technology called AI and actually talked to it today and it actually works pretty good. And what I, I'd ask the simple question, a difference between a welfare state and a conservative republic? Right now, the United States is a conservative republic. And it said there's key distinctions between a conservative republic and a welfare state. Welfare state. Government takes priority, responsibility for social well-being and housing of citizens, free and public safety, free and public healthcare. Government-run education. Facilitate support for all unemployed and unhoused. Government control over housing, food, and other areas. High taxes on everyone, everyone except, mainly for the working class. Price controls because of all of the above, which means putting small businesses out of business. That's the welfare state. Is that what we want? One of the things of what you said was, you know, a lot of the homeless want to be homeless, they want to be left alone. I've talked to some of them. They said, leave me alone. Okay? The county has given money to help take care of them in the summertime and in wintertime. But where is most of your homeless gravitate? Toward the inner cities? Okay? The inner cities need to take more of a responsibility. They've received a lot of money. I mean, the chairman went through millions of dollars that they've received. Okay? What's the outcome? I think everyone in here would like less government in their life, less taxes, and be able to do things for yourself and make decisions for yourself and your family. You know what that, the definition of? A conservative republic. That's where I stand and that's what I believe.
I just wanted to say that some of the issues that we have, I think we have a task force on encampments, so we go by and check people if I'm not mistaken on that. I know we did it in Spencer Mountain Encampment, we did it over at this Sims Park Encampment we've had, so we are providing different things to go out and do that. But we also have cleanup and homeless people, yeah, they're situational, but the thing is, they always tend to have cleanup when we have to go and figure out where these encampments are on property for different things. Anyway, this concludes the next meeting. Our next meeting work session is Tuesday, August 12, 6:00 p.m. here in the RBS, Junior Public Forum. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions, comments, or please stuff on our spectacular turn dial at seven oh four, eight six six three one nine six. Goodnight, Rob. Good night, Rob.